I'd like to call this meeting of the Blue Lake City Council to order. Welcome all. This is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, our regular scheduled meeting. Our first order of business, pledge of allegiance and establish a form of the council. Would you join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. All right. Mandy, would you establish a form of the council?
Yes. Mayor Jones, here. Mayor Potentials absent. Councilmember McKay, here. Councilmember Stefani, here. Councilmember Edgar is absent.
We do have a quorum of three. Item two, approval of the agenda. First to the councils, is there anyone here that would like to move anything around? Has anything changed?
Well, I think there's a number of things that should be moved, but I'd like to hear from the public about what they'd like.
All right. Now to public, anyone in the public would like to move anything around?
Do we have a copy of the agenda, Andy?
The whole of the agenda.
So, the public requests that number 12, 15, 14, and 15, 12, 15, 14, and 15, be moved up after public comment number three. These are all items that many of us have come here to speak on. And instead of having at the end of the meeting, I'd rather not sit through the whole meeting. It would be greatly appreciated if we could move those 12, 13, 14, and 15 up between three and four.
Any other public comment?
Yes. I'm going to say that I would appreciate if it were moved around also, because it's going to be quite a long meeting with all the other agenda items. So I agree with Kent.
Any other public comment?
I would share my 14 moved. I could go home in a reasonable hour.
Okay. So we could move 14 above 12, and then make it 14, 12, 13. So yours would be right after public comment. Any other public comment? Okay, back to council. So it looks like maybe we should move 14 under three, then go to 12, and then go to 13.
And then 15, too. I guess that was one of the lists that we were asked.
Oh, 14 and 15, yes.
15.
Have you done that with the moves?
I second. Okay. Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Kelly Stefani to move the agenda so that we are dealing with, let me get this straight now, we want to do 14, then 15, then 12, then 13?
Sure.
Okay. Or do we want to do 14, 12, 13, 15?
Yeah, that's fine. That's what we.
Okay. Let's do that. That's what I had originally as well. Just clarifying. Any further discussion from council? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? It passes. We have an agenda. Item three, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, I'll take the gentleman in the front, and then Lisa, and then the gentleman in the back.
Scott Fraser, 737 Blue Lake Boulevard. I'd like to first talk about how difficult it seems to be to get information about city business. Before the May 15th planning commission meeting, I went to the website and the document, disposition and development agreement for Danco was badly out of date, hard to read for all the crossovers and crossouts and retyping. So I made a request at City Hall, and I was given a DVA. And really what I'd asked for was the ground lease. What did the ground lease say? You need to have your attorney interpret it for you. So my question to you, Mayor Jones and council, is are we in the process of preparing a project with Danco for a dollar a year, which is what it says on page three of attachment five? I know this is not a Q and A, but that's an important question the community would like to have answered. Secondly, I attended the May 15th planning commission meeting, but before that, on May 10th, in a meeting here in City Hall, I requested that we have a city council agenda item for workshop, is what I was calling it. And Mandy said she could schedule that in time for tonight's meeting. So through the chair, Mayor Jones, where is the agenda item tonight? Requested on May 10th for a workshop on Danco. I'd like to have an answer to that one, please. Not tonight, but in writing, email me, fine. Mandy has my email. So on May 15th, your planning commission recommended that the city council host a town hall, they called it. Sounds a lot like the workshop idea, but I like town hall better. Okay, good. That's not on the agenda either. It was clear that the format of this meeting and the planning commission meetings does not allow for Q and A, so people went away from that planning commission meeting thinking that some of them got answers to their questions and some of them didn't. So we'd like to have a format that facilitates getting answers to the questions that are asked. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Lisa, you were next. Okay, that's fine. We'd like to have your name, but you're not. It's optional.
Roy Gomans.
Roy Gomans, thank you.
I actually am a business owner in the city of Eureka. I own a business called Forever Found. We were an event space. We actually put on an event right across the street called Funk and Radio Festival. That was a success. And I'm just here to kind of, to sound the alarm on some issues that we've encountered as a dream maker. We set up Forever Found in Eureka as a dream maker. I've got five businesses in the city of Eureka. Leslie Castellano was actually, she's now the executive director and our board representative of our, of our area. And there, we had some really ethical issues. We had some ethical violations as our representative that Leslie committed. And in our search for transparency from elected officials, we found some really dire information regarding who Leslie Castellano and the Ink People have been supporting and what agenda that they've had, and what kind of infiltration is occurring with the city of Eureka right now. So I have brought some things that I would like to put into public and make sure that people here are aware of the Ink Peoples', what the Ink People have been doing over the years. They have been incubated, supported, and financed. An anarchist agenda, which essentially has, has supported really violent and really organized organizations, one being called Humboldt Grassroots, which was incubated and supported and published underneath the Ink Peoples' facility. So we are dealing with a lot of issues right now in the city of Eureka, and there's several investigations going on, including IRS investigations and other investigations of the Ink People with improprieties and conflicts of interest at the city and infiltration. And I really hope that the city of Blue Lake recognizes some things and some truths about this group of people. And we are here and we'll go everywhere to sound the alarm, since I have kids in our school systems here, I have kids in our community. And anarchy is not what we want. And if you're going to be an anarchist, be transparent about it. Tell people that that's what you're supporting and what your true agenda is. And if people vote for you, that's democracy. So far, we've got one of three council members to admit that they're anarchists after the city manager called us flat-earthers and conspiracy theories. Two days later, we attended a town hall meeting, called out Mario Fernandez, who is associated with Leslie Castellano because of the Ink People housed their anarchist agenda. Don't let that happen in Blue Lake. We are here to sound an alarm. Certain associations with certain people will bring down certain scenarios. Don't associate with anarchists. Anarchy wants to bring down, they, they, they want homelessness, they want drug addiction, they want crime in our community. That's what anarchy is about, Ink People. That's what they've been incubating for a long time now. Take a look at it, the facts are there. Just read the facts.
The three minutes are.
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa, I think you were next.
May I hand out what I have to say?
I did want to make this public. Could you make that public for me?
Thank you. Thank you for having the meeting. My name is Lisa Hoover. And I, as well as others in the community, attended the recent planning commission meeting, and that was going to address someone earlier today, just this evening, on the housing element revisions and development of the Powers Creek district. There were general, there was general consensus among the community members attending that the proposed developments of the area have not been well communicated. And by that, I mean in a forum and format that allows the communication both ways, offering engagement, questions, and feedback. This topic is not new. It has been requested in documenting council minutes dating at least back to 2021. Since then, only one public meeting has been held, and I could never find any minutes. Related to the public forum is the need for the city to present and receive feedback on the development proposals of the Powers Creek area as a whole, not just parcel by parcel, as this ignores potential cumulative effects of developments on current recreational experiences by the community members and visitors, and importantly, on the Powers Creek watershed and adjacent riverine system. Related to the review of the area as a whole, at the recent planning commission meeting, someone mentioned that a master plan may be developed and presented. This plan would provide the full picture of the proposed developments and an opportunity to review their consistency or inconsistencies. The infrastructural needs to accommodate all developments, such as vehicles ingress and egress, parking, capacity of wastewater treatment systems, and opportunities to coordinate the state-assigned housing units across developments on Taylor Way, not just at the Danco area. After hearing public comment, the head of the planning commission expressed a bit of surprise about the extended questions, recommendations, concerns raised by the public. Likewise, did other commissioners, so much so that the commission asked the council to hold a public forum on this topic and before any final decisions were made. I want to publicly thank the planning commission for hearing the people and acting on their behalf. Even though the planning commission's request, I did not see any mention of a public forum on tonight's agenda or in the city manager's report. I recognize that there has been much work put into this by the city and staff, but unfortunately, effective communication with the public about this work along the way has not been my experience or others. This includes the timing of making items available for the public to see. I very much value where I live and how they need more attention. They are not mutually exclusive, which has been implied by some of the city's responses or the lack thereof. I've tried my best to keep informed, but can't always keep up by attending this meeting and that many or reading the lengthy documents with terminology and implications I don't understand. Before the housing element is submitted and before any agreements are finalized with developers, I ask again for public forums focusing on this topic that include the entirety of the proposed and potential developments in the Powers Creek district and in the city of Blue Lake. Thank you.
I think Erin was next.
I have a point of order first. There's frequently 15 minutes allotted to this. The public would like, in the matter of transparency, to know whether we're only going to be having five speakers here, or, or are we going to be quashed and not able to present documents and speak today? So that's my point of order of clarification as far as how many people will get, be able to speak today on the public comment on non-agenda items. So thank you, my point of order.
Were you next? Did we answer that? Can we go beyond the 15 minutes? It's possible, but I don't think we need to. We'll see.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. I am Erin McClure from McClure Trust. Here are a few questions that, that large landowners, property owners, and old-time families in our community want to have answered. I realize you can't answer them tonight, but I expect answers in the end. Whatever happened with the two murders at the River Bar? And are we living amongst murderers among us? Why is the city manager still the city clerk? And will that position be filled at some time? Or will it be an elective, an elective position at some point? Why do we not get a treasurer's report each month? And is it possible that that could start happening? Why are there people living on trailer, way, and trailers? Is this an unhealthy situation for our community? And should it be stopped? Do you feel like it is appropriate for a city manager to leave important meetings to go on fire calls? Is this a conflict? Is our city manager ever reviewed? And if so, when? And by whom? And can the public look at the review? And who is the direct supervisor of our city manager? And where does the city manager's salary come from? Does it come from our water and sewer fees that we pay? Do you see a conflict with the city manager being the city manager, the city clerk, a member of the volunteer fire department, and very active on each commission meetings? What does the Arts and Heritage Committee have to do with the Danco project? Do you find it appropriate for the committee to call not Danco supporters racists? And is it appropriate for a city council member to engage in a conversation at the committee meeting and be pro-Danco? Is it true that the city of Blue Lake would owe Danco $200,000 if that project does not go through here in Blue Lake? And the most important question that I have tonight is, are there ever personal vendettas? Or is there ever retaliation against the people of our town to speak out against the city agenda? City mayor, I hope and trust that you respect the people of our town enough to answer these questions. Thank you for your time, and God bless us all.
She has to say who goes. I do want to go. Come here.
Becky, did you have your hand? Okay.
Good evening. I want to say that I appreciate every member of this council. I appreciate every member that volunteers their time. I appreciate the community members who do not sit on council's work missions. Right now, my son's playing at the baseball field across the street, and I am missing it to be here. I'm not very happy about that. I believe we all truly care for the special place that we get to call home. I believe that members of this council believe in the process of local government. Otherwise, why are we here? Which is why I am so concerned. I'm concerned for all of us who seek the truth. At the last planning commission meeting, I voiced a personal opinion during the public comment. I now have been participating in local government, and it feels good. I want to contribute, not take away. Following that planning commission meeting, there was an Arts and Heritage Commission meeting that took place. During this meeting, many members of that commission discussed at length the personal views and opinions of multiple community members, including myself. I don't have the time to repeat all of the slander, incorrect, misinformed judgments, but I will say, at first, I felt very angry. Then I had time to look at the bigger picture and watch the video a few times. After reviewing that recording, I realized that the commission had no idea who they were discussing that night. They didn't know that I, a Native American woman, had voiced my concerns at the planning commission meeting. Surely, they would not have gone into such great lengths to discuss that what and them if they had been aware of the truth. Who was leading that meeting? Who did have all of the knowledge? Who was dishonest? In my eyes, most of the commission fell victim to half-truths and a personal agenda being met. How can a commission be expected to make choices on subjects they know half-truths about? I can't help but ask myself, assuming that they have watched the footage now, do they wonder what the hell happened? Do you feel played? Do you see a problem? I want to clarify that I am not asking any more out of these volunteers. I don't think that they should be required to fact-check information or spend 20 hours a month watching minutes or meetings to be fully informed. They deserve the same transparency and honesty that we have been seeking. Council, you may recall, of course. The city of Blue Lake is part of the League of Cities. It is required that council members sign the Code of Ethics. In addition, this council is given a City of Blue Lake City Council Roles and Responsibilities Protocol Manual. I think a number of you need to hear and think about this. The council listens, this is an excerpt, "The council listens to its citizens, acts responsibly, and seeks innovative and creative solutions to best meet the challenges before them. Guided by fairness, honesty, integrity, and transparency, the city council and the city staff are responsive to the needs of their community. Please think about the role and the power that you have as council. This community is involved, and we're not going anywhere. That should hopefully be a good thing soon." Lastly, I want to thank the members of this community who do spend 15 or 20 hours every month educating themselves to be informed. Thank you.
I did have something to say about the May 15th planning commission meeting, but instead, I'll be handing this to you tonight. Thank you. Pass this around. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I had a list of legitimate questions, which I have just handed to you. I have only one thing to discuss, which is the May 17th Arts and Heritage Commission, during which Chaira Sbommen, an event coordinator and applicant for the Arts and Heritage Commission, smoke-up stating, "Let's bring up the elephant in the room." She went on to disparage a group of Blue Lake citizens, but focused primarily on one person. As the meeting progressed, Marmie Atkins and Mandy Mager spoke against the same individual, making numerous statements of derogatory and judgmental nature. Between all the speakers, both city staff and commission members, more than 15 minutes were devoted to inappropriate discussion of Blue Lake residents. Mandy characterized statements in opposition of the Danco project as racist and offensive. Those voicing opposition were described as a group that are misinformed. Joining with our citizens, who have been speaking up for the last few years, we have done hours of research, listening to meetings, reading minutes, agendas, everything from the very first general plan to the updates along the way. The truck route, all housing updates and drafts, the ozone, special meetings, you name it, we have read it, listened to it, and watched it. Not one of us are against affordable housing or retail in town, just the size and scope of the planned project without proper updates for the community along the way. Since the beginning, council and staff have stated that the whole community would be involved, from naming to colors and even design, and naming, which has not been the case. Being the admin of the Blue Lake Community 299 Group and the Blue Lake Question and Answer Forum, I have worked hard for the town to bring people together for the last seven years, volunteering my own time and making decisions and monitoring this group. Sorry. One person stated, "We started this forum so we could talk and block those we didn't want to hear the conversations going on." This, too, is completely untrue, now open to everyone, but there are better rules that are now going on. Because everyone was calling the 299 group toxic, including our city manager and other admins of that same group, I took all city agendas and project information onto the forum group to keep the 299 page for events information and news only. That way, if people want to discuss other types of information, they could do it without the other 3,200 members of the community having to read it. After going through all posts and comments, much of what has been said is incorrect. At this time, as a business owner, an artist, a homeowner, and lifelong Blue Lake citizen, I do not feel comfortable with Chaira Sbommen being either the events coordinator or the Arts and Heritage Commission. The personal attack which she began was out of place for this type of meeting. All people in that room contributed to this and should all be held accountable for their actions. Something like that could have been done in a more professional level. Thank you.
Is there other? Chair recognizes Kent Swobinski.
I also have some handouts for you folks. Do I bring them to you? How did that work? Kent Swobinski, start my time back, please. Today, Steve Medrone was brought before the Board of Supervisors to be sanctioned and monitored for something. That didn't happen today, fortunately. Steve's a great person. I did want to make mention one of the prior speakers here, who was speaking about the Ink People is involved in litigation, from my understanding. Cindy Day Wilson, who I consider a friend, is handling that delegation. I think, I think if I remember right, it's $500,000, is that correct? Yes, that's correct. I want to avoid that. That's why I'm here tonight, to try and avoid you folks ending up in that same position. I, I do risk management. So I brought you some, some information for you here. It's a rather lengthy packet. Pull off your paperclip and follow along if you want to. The first page is just some emails, and read that. And I requested that this be brought to you folks. I don't know if you got these in your mailbox. These comments were to be to you. I would hope you got them, because if you have individuals on your staff blocking correspondence, it may go to you and something's broken. The second one is titled 42721. And this is going to be an ongoing educational thing, so if you might want to go over this, there'll be a test. It first starts with, it's called, it's called a land use and zoning matrix. This is a consistency matrix. From the next packet beyond that, it's labeled GP, and you have, that's from your general plan. The second one was from, the first one was from an update. And when you come down to that particular one from 42721, and you look on the same one here under the GP, you look up opportunity zone, and this is part of your general plan. If you have two different consistency matrix that are not consistent, your general plan is not consistent. You find maps in here that aren't consistent, you find verbiage that's not consistent, your general plan, and I don't know, Bobby, when that happened, but 85 was when the general plan was updated last. I think Steve Medrone was on that. That might have been before your guys' timeline. But this needs to be updated. One of the first biggest things that you have on your housing element is, housing must be consistent with your general plan. Your general plan must be consistent internally. I'm trying to help a little bit. I've been doing this kind of work for, I think, the past 30 years of all of this. I'm pretty good at it. And then lastly, I think, the last document is Resolution Number 3219. This is also added on to this. I think this is the ozone. And again, you'll find that that's not consistent. So before you move forward with anything regarding any land use element, just dependent on the planning housing element, you first have to have an update on your general plan. And then you have to have consistency determination. That finding has to be made. And I just want to help a little bit, so I appreciate your time. This is a start of the educational process. Thanks for my friend to speak.
Is there any other public comment?
Yes. Angela Gares, thank you guys for allowing me to speak. I'm going to talk about in regards to the Arts and Heritage meeting, May 17th of 2023. From the beginning of the meeting to one hour and 16 minutes, 61 minutes were spent discussing Blue Lake residents' reaction to the Danco project and the naming process. I would like to read some of these examples of what was said. Sherry's. So can I just bring up the elephant in the room a little? Well, yeah. So with what was just put out on social media, I think, as this committee, you know, there is a call from town hall to the town to be presented. I think there's a very small group of people that are very vocal against this. Patricia, I've heard people tell me that, and it's like I'm just speechless. I just don't understand. How can you call it a marketing toy? Mandy, you could, as a commission, come out with a statement, you know, which I think would be fully appropriate. Mandy. Marty, I know you've had interactions, so you know, you. Marty, this gentleman has reached out to me in length, and that's fine, you know, sharing your thoughts with me and everything, but I eventually stopped answering because I just don't have the capacity. Patricia, is that Matt? Sherry, yeah. Marty, oh, not even arguing, I guess trying to maybe explain things. It's as if I'm explaining to someone who doesn't want to hear an explanation, and I didn't want to engage anymore, because I didn't, it didn't seem like it was a connection made. I think we would just continue to do this past each other, and I wasn't saying things that helped. So I need to step away, and a couple times, I let Mandy know, and a couple times, I let my tribal administrator know, because folks who get upset and then feel like they're not listened to have the tendency to lash out, especially at tribes. I think it's part of their privilege. You know, this person has, like, a very privileged life. You know, this person has, like, a very privileged life. The bottom line is, he has access to resources and language that he can use against us. As an indigenous woman, I just can't allow someone to take that from me. And so I had to stop communicating, and I'm worried that because I did that, this might have perpetuated what we saw today, and, um, I apologize for that. Sherry, they created their own little special Blue Lake forums so that they could talk amongst themselves and block who they wanted to block. Mandy, I think that is beyond that honest, honesty, because I think there's a level of discourse taking place that is looking for anything to legitimize. I wish I could finish. Um, I do have the minutes for you guys, if you wanted to put that in.
Is there any other comment? Public comment? Okay, we'll move on to. Oh, oh, hi, Alex.
What brought me over here tonight, and Bobby? Was we were watching the Zoom of this? And we heard someone say, "Is it appropriate? Is it right? Should the city manager leave her position here and go on a fire call?" That brought back to me my early experience in Blue Lake. Scotty Harden was the chair of the school elected board. He was fire chief and director of Public Works in Blue Lake. Mike Fowler was his assistant. He was assistant chief in the fire department. When I came to work for the city, I was already secretary of the fire department. And I came to work over there as park supervisor. And when that fire siren went off, all three of us left our duties. And the reason was, because that is a matter of life and death, property value. This here is politics. This here has to take separate status to life and death. So when someone comes in and questions a city official's dedication to life and death, I feel a need to speak out, because if you want to undo community, that's where you start. That's where you start tearing apart the trust we have as a community. I have to stop there. I had a second point, but I'm eighty-two years old, and sometimes it just goes away. So there it is. Just consider that. Okay, that's all I'm asking here. When that siren goes off, somebody's in trouble. And believe me, I'd like to see all the city employees go to that in our district, because we're a small community, and we need that dedication to our community first. So don't be pulling that trick anymore. Thank you.
One more briefly. All I want to say is, um, when I watched that video the other day, I'm not going to get into all the stuff that was said that's really covered, but I'm, I'm clear as to what the definition of the Arts and Heritage Council is, because it seemed like what was happening on that video was that there was an extension into the city council's business. And that didn't seem to me like you're the city council, and sort of seemed like it was dripping over into that, so I just wondered what the definition and responsibility of the Arts and, uh, Arts and Heritage Councils.
Any other public comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have Julie on Zoom. Go ahead, Julie.
Hey, guys. Thank you very much, um, for offering, this is Julie Christie, um, for offering Zoom. I really appreciate it, and I'd also like to, um, thank Roy for coming in today, um, I, um, from Eureka City Council, our meetings. I think it's important that we just, um, be aware of other things happening in the county. Um, in Matt's defense, you know, he just felt kind of blindsided going into the Arts and Heritage, feeling like there wasn't really much involvement for him to kind of, and the rest of the commissioners, to bring in toward monopolize for the community, to give options, you know, he felt kind of like, or that reached out to staff, and he was pretty much told this was the offhand. So in Matt's defense, you know, and I think as far as the Arts and Heritage thing, you know, a little apology would be okay. I also understand the planning commission's recommendation for Town Hall directed at staff, and since the majority of the questions being asked can only be answered by staff. Um, if the staff didn't really want that obligation, if the commission, they stay fairly unanimous in their motion, and they also admitted that they had not yet fully reviewed the proposed housing and additional use permits, because they just received it three days prior to the hearing. Um, I personally, as well as a lot of other community members, have been reviewing it for months. It's hard to find in the Power Stick page and the Law &amp; Order Plan. Um, I hope commissioners are present tonight, and tonight would have been a great time, but agenda is assigned them, so that, uh, since staff was used on what we really wanted, we could have had the opportunity tonight to, um, present that, and we really just don't want another self-pitch presentation. Um, that's not what we've been asking for. And, uh, I also want to get back to the HCO grant that was received back, um, years ago. It was twenty-nine thousand for our general plan housing element, and fifteen thousand of that was specifically for CQW, and it was quoted to be finished by the last, uh, HCD review. And, um, the last few, uh, city council meetings, um, the new agenda I can pop up, I, I know it's, uh, kind of, I have grain salt, or like, I understand that maybe sometimes you guys don't see my man, but I've been trying to get a new agenda item on. We need a current truck route update. This one's not going to get swept under the rug. The whole process has been kind of failure, and you're listening to people, and that needs to be remedied. Um, and I think everybody, uh, tonight, for my right to speak.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any other public comments? So just to be clear, um, you know, during the public comment time, we can't really discuss issues because they haven't been agendized. We can ask staff to answer any questions that may have come up during the public comment, but as far as discussion, that's, that's not to occur during public comment. And we can also add things to our agenda that we decide to, uh, have for future agenda items, so that's something else that we can do.
Mayor, can you tell us how we can have things added to the agenda items? Is there a process for that, so that we would know how we request? Do we have to go through you, or do we go directly to your staff, or how does the policy on that in Blue Lake?
I believe the policy is that you get an agenda item by Wednesday. Is that right?
By the Wednesday, yeah, you have to have your reports and your copies.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, um, shall we move on? Yes.
I remembered. My loss.
Okay, Alex, I'll give you that.
It was back, you listen.
Okay. I'll give you that.
Anyone who has been here over the forty years, as Bobby and I have, I think, I project, we have a great appreciation for this city manager. We didn't have a city manager until nineteen ninety-six. And in that time, from that time till twenty-oh-eight, twenty-oh-nine, city government of this town was a farce, an absolute farce, bad government. Then we had a period of outsiders coming in to govern us. The police department went up in smoke, and we returned to the sheriff's department, which was one of the wise decisions then. But the city government was under the hands of these strangers, and it did not serve our community one whit. Mandy Mager came in here and stabilized it.
Is there a timer going? I'm sorry, I should interrupt. Is the timer going?
Nope.
I'm curious if Dancler is, is local here, or if the Ink People are local here, sir, because those people are out-of-towners also with their own agenda, homelessness and affordable housing and your.
Okay, so, this is, this is not the time.
Okay, so you just gave him a lot of time, like, so there's the out-of-towners infiltrating right now.
I know.
And it seems like it's going on, and you guys are allowed to happen.
Okay, yeah, we have to have order.
Sure.
We all have to be following rules, and the rule of the public comment time is that I have given Mr. Rick a little, another opportunity to speak, because he didn't really speak the whole three minutes, so assuming he had about a minute left, go ahead and maybe you can conclude.
Yeah, we didn't have that.
To be kidding me, started this conversation.
Oh, he was all this time.
So the out-of-towners are infiltrating.
So all I want to say is that Mandy came in here and stabilized this town. And some of you may have objections to our stabilization, but let me tell you, what she's done, it was a huge improvement over the time from nineteen ninety-six to whenever Mandy came in, what's that, twenty years, which was a farce in this town, absolute farce. And that's, so thank you, Mandy, at least on this one. Can I make it in the time, lady?
I think.
Ding ding.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if we could address one, one situation that was thrown up. Do we do that? Do I ask you? It's the idea of, of a town hall, um, regarding the.
So that is. Sorry. So that is being planned. So that was proposed by the Planning Commission, so staff is already working on that. We'll be here tomorrow, and we'll be working with the commission to, um, assess their availability to attend that meeting, but we'd like to have that before their next planning commission meeting, which I believe is June nineteenth. So that is in the process of being scheduled.
Point of order. I believe that's a decision that you folks would be making. It's not on the agenda, so it can't even be discussed at this time, uh, so.
Um, sorry. It was something that was asked during public comments. Why ask staff to address it?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, address every question then, or we just pick and choose?
The council decides which questions they want to ask staff at which ones. That's, that's part of being a council person. So, um, was there another question you wanted to have answered, Elizabeth? Okay. Elise? Okay, go ahead.
My question is about the Arts and Heritage Commission and, um, the conduct that I noticed when I watched the video. Now, I understand all of our commissions in town are held to a similar standard of professionalism, um, and, and ethics, and I was, I was a little bit shocked by the, by the conversations that happened, by, um, the fact that Mandy seemed to support those conversations and encourage those conversations, uh, that they were very much directed at certain individuals. Um, so my concern is that, uh, as a council, um, as a commission that is, is part of our city government, that the council and all of ours individually are in some ways responsible for what happens in our commission meetings. I personally want to denounce what I saw and heard happening at that meeting. I, I personally do not want to be held responsible for what happened at that meeting. I think it was deplorable. I think it opens the city to a liability, to a lawsuit, that is, to me, a little bit unbelievable. I just can't imagine that we had two city employees in that room that were taking part and encouraging and sanctioning this conversation that had no business happening in a public meeting, absolutely no business. And those people have exposed the city to a lawsuit, and I would like to suggest that we suspend any further meetings of that commission until this issue is fully and completely managed, because I don't ever want to see something like that happen again in a city sanctioned commission meeting. So what was your question? I guess I didn't have a question.
No, I think your question is.
My question would be for our city attorney. My possible, my, my question would be for our city attorney.
I think your question is that, is it appropriate for us to sanction our own commission, or to halt all?
Thank you. Thank you, Emily.
Well, I'm just asking.
That is a question. Yes.
Uh, your comments, um, because you said you started out with a question. I'm just wondering.
My question is, how, how do we sanction or suspend that commission? That's what I'd like to do. I would like to either sanction or suspend that commission, um, until we can get this managed, so I don't believe that they should be having any further meetings until we get this taken care of.
I think then our, our question is to the city attorney as to what our responsibilities are, and how we can get that.
What our legal responsibilities are, absolutely, but I think as a council, we can, um, we can make a motion tonight to make sure that they're not going to.
Well, I don't think we can, because it's not an agenda item, so I would, I would disagree with that. It's something we can do at our next meeting. Mandy, when does the Arts and Heritage Commission meeting?
They meet the third Wednesday of the month?
Thursday, so they'll meet on the twenty-first. So I think we can, we can seek legal counsel as to how to go about that, um, if, you know, it sounds appropriate.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any further comments from council? We'll move on to item fourteen. We have moved up. This is the McClure lease agreement, discussion, history, et cetera. Erin McClure can be available to give history and answer questions.
So this is, uh, House Member Stefani's item? Okay.
Yes, it was my item, and, um, I brought it forward at our last council meeting because McClure was here and asking for, um, her issue to be heard, and, um, I felt that it was appropriate for the council to be aware of some of this history, and also, uh, know where our, where our current situation sits, because I believe it's the council's responsibility to tend to this issue, to make sure it's being tended to. Erin's.
The city attorney told me it was.
That it was being tended to?
That it was the city council's.
Oh, right. So, so yes, ultimately, just about everything is the city council's responsibility, um, right down to the, um, the housing element and all a hundred, and I don't know how many pages of the housing element, and half of the, half of the items that, at least half of the items that you stated says responsibility, and the answer is almost always the city council. So, um, whether it goes before the Planning Commission first, or it goes before some other commission first, ultimately, it's our responsibility. And ultimately, it's our responsibility to make sure that staff is tending to, um, all of these items. So I understand that, um, the McClure Trust, um, the McClure family initially signed a lease with the city of Blue Lake to locate water towers on their property, not water towers, but water tanks, on their property to facilitate, um, gravity feed water system for the town in nineteen eleven. And at that time, part, um, the two concessions that the city made was that they would give free water to the McClure family ranch, and they would pay the McClure family fifty dollars every six months as a lease agreement for that, um, for that privilege. So, um, and that was a hundred-year lease. So in, uh, two thousand and eleven, that hundred-year lease expired. And the city has not, uh, has not negotiated, um, a new lease with, with McClure Family Trust since two thousand and eleven. Now, I understand that there was one proposed in which the terms were, um, were to stay the same, and that the McClure family rejected that, so for the last, um, twelve years, there has not been.
It was actually, actually the lease that was proposed to the McClure family that we turned down, and that would have been my mom's job at that time, um, was actually less than the lease from nineteen eleven. There was going to be a cap on our water and no financial, no amount of. There was going to be a cap on our water and no financial, no amount of dollar amount.
Okay.
So that is right now what has been proposed to me. And, and I want to have this written in the minutes 10 times. That all I want is a fair market valued lease for where you guys keep your water tanks on my land.
So is it true that in your recent conversation with the city attorney that it was said that if you didn't agree to the through a lease proposal, that you were subject to the potential of eminent domain?
So the next step is eminent domain, which is an absolute possibility because in the eighties, that was done. The same scenario came about with Peter Busman, who was the other tank on his property. And his land was taken by eminent domain. I have been in contact with him every day. He did everything he could do to save his land. And it was taken by the city of Blue Lake. I asked him if he would come to the city council to represent me. He said he cannot come without having a heart attack. So that's how serious people's property is to them. Intimate domain, domain is unacceptable to me. I think a fair market value lease, anyone who does not think that that is fair, I mean, that's ridiculous. So I don't know what our next step is. But the last time I talked to the attorney, what was proposed to me was the lease in 2013 that, or 13 years ago, I guess, that our family was given and turned out. So that's where we're at right now with the city of Blue Lake.
So if you ask Google how much a dollar in 1911 is worth today, it'll tell you $32 or $31 and 90 something cents. So by a factor of 32, that $50 is now, if you extrapolate that. 100 bucks times 32, $3200. Hey, how about that? $3200 a year, which is still a really small amount of money when you think about the impact. It's a ridiculously small amount of money. Of course, there's some value to, to granting the property owner water at no cost. But, you know, I, I guess there's, it was also proposed that there should be a cap on the amount of water they could use. Well, it's a ranch. They have, you know, irrigation needs. They have livestock needs. You know, there should be something really reasonable. The city should be willing to negotiate, not say, take this 100-year-old agreement or shove it. That's ridiculous. You know, and us as a council, we need to recognize that the location of that water, water tank is very important to our city. It's very important to everybody who lives in this place and flushes a toilet. And there's a whole bunch of us that don't want to jeopardize our ability to live in our homes. And so to play hardball with somebody who's willing to negotiate with us is absolutely unreasonable. And, and it's just, it's just so disrespectful. It, it's hard for me to even imagine that it's happening and that somebody would say, even speak the words eminent domain, take a $50, you know, every six months lease or eminent domain.
I, I just feel like we shouldn't have to spend sleepless nights worrying what our town is going to do to us. And that's exactly where Pete Busman has been. And that's exactly where he told me I should be right now. That's pretty sad.
Well, if you pay about $50 a month for water, is that right?
It's more.
It's over $100 for a house.
Well, that's, that's water and sewer. They're not, they don't have sewer. So it's only water. So that's why I have to. That's what I came up with. So that's roughly $500 to $600 a year is what you're getting with the free water.
That, that doesn't make any sense. Because the original, the original agreement was free water plus. You were going to pay $100 a year. So we should still be willing to give her free water because.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to put the value on that free water.
I think what you need to do is what most people do is they get a survey or someone that knows agriculture land and.
Appraiser.
Appraiser, right. And they talk to them about and they find out what people are doing in other areas. Your attorney told me that he, that the city of Blue Lake was under absolutely no obligation to do something like that.
To get an appraiser?
Yeah.
I would, I would caution that this discussion is probably going in a direction that your attorney would probably caution you to probably cease.
Or is it?
Your attorney is actively speaking with Ms. McClure about the issue. There have been, there's been a lot of documents that have been prepared. I don't know the extent of those conversations at this point. But I would caution you that you're moving into an arena that.
Adeline, right now, I'm just waiting for his response back on a fair market value lease.
Well, I mean, I don't want to open up the city any liability. If we're, if we're in negotiations with the attorney, it sounds like things are moving forward.
They actually aren't.
Well.
I would like to make a mo, can I make a motion that we, that the council be informed with, of the terms of this negotiation by our attorney?
Yeah.
That we're allowed to speak on, that we're allowed to speak for the city on this matter?
But wouldn't that be a closed session?
It would be.
Because the.
Yeah.
Possible litigation.
Yep.
If that's a closed session, how do, how does the community, how does the community find out what's going on?
Well, we're finding out right now.
Okay.
And what would happen is the council would meet with our attorney. And we would discuss with him what we want him to do.
Yes.
And then when we all come to an agreement, it will come back to the community and.
What you've decided to do. What you guys decide.
It would come back to the community in the form.
And let us know.
With the community.
It would be an open session.
Yeah.
The decision would be an open session. Negotiations would be in closed session.
I can't believe they would be fussy. You got Pete, I mean, I can't believe the price of the water, but that's crazy. That, that they're doing us a favor. That's nothing. That's this big.
Okay. I, I will open this up to, I will open this up to the public. Right now, we're just sort of going through the motions of how we're going to proceed. And then I'll open it up to public. Now, you wanted to make a motion. And I would like to open up to public if there is some public, if you'd like to weigh in on your motion.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Elizabeth? Okay. Cautioned by our manager that this might be getting into some areas that we don't want to get into because it is in negotiations with the attorney. That's at the point where we're at. And we can't go very much further. I will ask the public for their comment on this item, but I can't, again, with public comment, we can't have a back and forth. And make your statement and we'll have to time you and we'll see how that goes. If there's no further discussion from council, I'll open up to the public. The chair recognizes Kent Swatowski.
Thank you, Chair. I strongly suggest that you do go into closed session. That's the correct procedure. It would be nice, though, that if you were getting legal opinions, if you actually had your attorney in the room to give legal opinions rather than staff members who are not attorneys. In the future, I highly recommend you have your attorneys paid to, to keep you out of those particular areas. That's their job. And the county has had some major problems with staff giving legal determinations and they end up costing them a whole bunch of money. The process of basically an eminent domain does have some criteria to it. And you'd find if you went before a judge, it's very likely that if you did not do due diligence and your best effort to negotiate somebody who wants to do a regional thing, you may be completely denied on eminent domain. And I really want to thank the McClure Trust and Erin here for, for not going ahead and locking those gates out the day you, you failed to have a contract. My understanding is you have grants funding this dependent upon redoing these tanks or doing something with the tanks. And that's totally in jeopardy. I mean, there's no way that you're going to get a grant fund on something that you don't have the basis of actually the ability to put it there that allows you the money. This is, again, an area that you wish to, to watch and do very carefully. Through your, your council, through the whole process. And then we look forward to having a, a good working relationship, as I believe McClure family has had for years. This is a very valuable asset. And the fee for that, if you were to do eminent things, would be through the roof. I would hate to guess what an appraiser would say. Because you're basically taking her property, in my understanding, and you're bill forking that. You have a line that goes through the middle of her property. And I've known attorneys like Bill Barnum, somebody who's proposed a thing. And it, it's not uncommon for you to end up paying three or four times even what the appraiser pays by the time this goes to court and adjudicated. So this is something to be very cautious with. And I, I really appreciate the fact that Erin is here and wanting to talk and wanting to negotiate with you. A lot of people after 11 years of being shown, of course, she's entitled most likely to a retroactive pay for those 11 years. In other words, if you come up with an agreement where it's $5,000 a year, she would be more than justified if you had most likely to say, well, of course, we'll retroactively go back and pay you that money. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on this particular topic.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir. I request your name.
Gary Johnston. I'm new into this.
Would you repeat that, please?
Gary Johnston. I own 791 Tater Way at the end of the Tater Way, 18580. I find it simply amazing that, and see, I'm not, I'm not real familiar with everything because I'm just coming. But to be able to procure a water tank and the water sources for that small nominal amount, why it's still in litigation after 11 years. See, I, I don't know. That's crazy. We know how, but you said something about the importance of the water, you know? I got all the water I want down there. There's these slopes here. And she's willing to, I don't understand where, where. You know, I see somebody shaking their head. I, I will be talking to a few of these people tomorrow and the next day. But, you know, the gentleman said, you know, she can lock that gate and we don't have any water. She can cut that water off. Well, I think it's good that, at least she opened it up. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Okay, back to council then for possible action. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Julie.
I'm, I'm sorry too. I just want, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm being a farmer here, got the critters. They keep letting me get my pens clean. I, I don't like hearing about Pete's situation. And I hate to see anybody else in the spirit of want a Blue Lake path issue. My family went through that too. That's why you guys have a beautiful 299 coming into town that cut our mansion in half. We had a choice for $1,600. So please take the time to review this, do it properly. And I appreciate any support from council and staff supporting our, our act lands and our surrounding rural areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other comment? Okay, back to council for possible action.
I would like to move that we, that the council be included in a discussion with our city attorney about the negotiation of this ground lease.
All right. Motion made by Elise Scifani, seconded by Elizabeth McCray. To have a discussion with our attorney concerning the McClure Family Trust water tank easement in closed session. Ending my attorneys.
What do you mean, meet the threshold?
I don't know if your conversation meets a threshold in a closed session. If it's not a negotiation, there's a very limited parameter, so we'll have to check and see if this meets that parameter.
And if it doesn't, then can we? Open session.
You have that open session item.
Yes. So if it doesn't meet parameters for closed session, then I'd like it to be an open session. I, I feel that the, the attorney officially needs to hear from the council about what we want and how we want him to proceed in this negotiation.
The other thought is having an ad hoc committee with this. But you caution against that too. Okay, all right. I'm trying to open this up to some possibilities. All right, so your motion is that you would like the council to have an agenda item about this issue. And you want it to be in either closed or open session, depending on the attorney's.
Yeah, whichever is most appropriate legally.
Recommendation.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And is that? The second. Okay, is the motion clear to our secretaries? Okay. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Three to zero. We're a small council tonight. All right. Getting on to our agenda, item 12 has been moved out to 14. Item 12 is City's Blue Lake Website Review, Ad Hoc Committee Update, Discussion and Direction. The city council has established an ad hoc committee to review the city's website and bring back ideas and options for updating the site and the site content. The ad hoc includes Adeline Jones, Mayor and Councilmember Scifani. So you met with our.
I met with our designer yesterday. And we went over some of the, some of the formatting, kind of mapping, doing some more mapping of the website. So we will be meeting again in a week to two weeks. I have some homework to do to get back to him on a couple of things. And, and then once that's done, he'll be ready to clone the site and start making all the changes. So cloning the site means what he did ask us for two weeks ago when we all met together was that we get to a place where we're not going to be making a lot of changes. So while the site is cloned. From the time he clones the site and starts rebuilding it, the time it goes live will be, would be about two weeks. And so what, what would be best to happen is if, if we can make minimal or no updates to the website during that time. Because he will take, he will take it as it exists on that day. And, and any, any changes that are made from our end between that day and the day it goes live as a new site, he'll have to go back and individually make all those changes again, so.
So it won't be downtime.
It will not be downtime.
It won't be off.
Continue to exist exactly as it is while he's working on the, on the cloned version of it.
That's good.
And so I just want to let Mandy and staff know that, that we'd like to have a conversation about, about that date. And, and let you know that any updates and changes that you think you're going to be making, say, in the next four weeks, if you could either try to make them in the next two weeks before we clone the site or possibly hold anything that can be held off, hold it off until the point where we go back live with the new site.
Well, fingers crossed, there's a lot going on in the summer. You know, there's a lot of events that are going on.
Right, right. But we can, we can, we can just kind of make a plan. And then anything that does need to be updated during that period of time, you can just keep a folder of, or, you know, you can basically keep a folder of all the changes that you've made in that period of time. And so then Andy can, can make, can make those changes again when he goes live.
So when is your next meeting with him?
I don't, I didn't have it scheduled.
Oh, you don't have it scheduled, yeah, okay.
But it'll be something in the neighborhood of a week.
Okay.
So you talked about a meeting with a lot of people. Did that happen? We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had that. We had two meetings with the bigger group.
Good, yeah.
And then, and then we all decided that the next meeting would be, would be a smaller, yeah. It didn't need to be everybody. Everybody kind of said, okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we had two large meetings. We had one meeting with just Elise and I kind of looking at the website. Then we had a meeting at the Grange with a group of interested folks. And it was about 10 or 12, a good amount around the table. Got everybody's input. Then we met with the webmaster here in this building, hoping to be able to use our capabilities here, which we weren't. So we ended up using a tablet and we got, we gave him more input. And then he felt he had enough information, so we're going to do what he did with them with just the lease.
So and in the, and in the meantime, I feel that he had done a bit of research on our site, figured out where it was, how stuff worked. You know, what, what he thought was worth to think of, what he wanted to change to fulfill our, our aspect of how we wanted to. And so, you know, he's, he's well on his way to get to that point where we can do the, do the dirty work and really get it done. So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it is. One of the big things that the committee wanted to see was on our, on our. One of the big things that the committee wanted to see was on our, on our front page to have an overall view of the city of Blue Lake. I mean, it would be similar to what we're looking at under the clock there, but that is dated, obviously. So we would want something newer and maybe from a different angle. And so we were going to ask the community if they knew anybody that had any drones. We were reaching out to Dave Farrell because he had some kind of a drone that could do it. So anyway, we're, we're actually at that point, aren't we not?
Oh, we got, we got another couple of weeks.
Oh, it's before.
Two, four weeks before we need that picture.
What do you need flown?
We, we, we want, we want an aerial picture of the town.
Yeah, we want, we want a photo.
I know you guys don't get along with Rancharia, but I do. I also know an individual that's got about a $35,000, $40,000 drone. And if I go talk to you.
Well, that's exactly the kind.
So what you need is this community flown?
Yeah.
Uh, we have it open.
Or do you want, where, where, do you want pictures of where these proposed things are going on?
Okay, so hang on just a minute.
It's his first meeting.
Yes, I know. Okay, I know, it's very exciting. So what, what I was just kind of sending out there is the idea that we need someone with the capability to fly over our town or, or take it from one of the peaks, you know, one of the higher areas in our town to get an overview picture of it, the way it looks now.
That's the city limits of, of Blue Lake. Is that what you're saying? So within the city limits of Blue Lake or a little bit outside?
A little bit outside, whatever, whatever, whatever we come up with.
Like the Mariah's Ranch, something like that?
Sky's the limit.
Okay, so thank you for the update, Elise. And it sounds like we are proceeding and keeping staff informed as to whether there'll be a downtime and what they need to do. Hang on a minute, I'm going to open it up. Is there any other comments from, or questions from council?
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to open it up to the public on this agenda.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure if you guys are doing the website, make sure it's ADA compliant. Because if it's not, it can be sued. I just want to know if you guys know that. Also, I was wondering if you guys have any kind of policy on data breaches? I know it's kind of unrelated, but maybe make sure you guys have something on that.
Data breaches?
Do you have a website with a breach or anything like that?
Right, right.
To make sure you have a reporting policy on.
Well, I know that our web designer is, he does all our security. But I don't know, I mean, I imagine he knows that sort of stuff, but I don't know what it is. Is there, well, anyway, I don't know.
Just want to make sure you guys are aware.
Thank you.
You could bring that up to him. Other comments? Mr. Sawatsky?
What I do is I've got, see, I'm 69, started, bought my first house up here when I was 19 on 220 Grove. Still, still a family trust item. But what I do is I do development. And when I do development, I go into an area and I am supposed to be able to go to one thing on your webpage and get all the information I need generally. And so I highly recommend that you have that. Right now, I couldn't locate that without finding out that it was in a Power's Creek. You really need to have a designation in there that's for your planning and building department. And in that, you will contain most of what's in your Power's Creek thing so that I can, I can go in there and say, this is the general plan that needs to be updated. This is the zoning for a piece of property. And again, consistency, I can't have two different maps because I could say, hey, I can put something there or two different matrices that show different things. Because I can make a major decision based upon what I see there on your website and, and then find out, well, that wasn't current, it was incorrect. I could spend millions of dollars buying a piece of property to develop, you know, 60 houses on. And then all of a sudden, well, Mr. Sawatsky, we didn't have our general plan updated. Such as a imperative, it's easy to find, one stop shopping. And that's what's basically required when you have a general plan that has to be updated. So I strongly support you having a separate area where a builder like myself can do it, building and planning or something or, you know, under that designation. And everything's in there, all your current documents that I would need to see to make a decision. That's just a recommendation after 50 years of being in that particular ballgame. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I strongly support in updating this, the comments that were just made there. I'm familiar with this capability and when, when you need a firewall or you need something so somebody can't get in here. So I strongly suggest it. If you're willing to, to work with you folks as far as what you need to do when you get something done, have, have the local people take a look at it and make sure it adheres to what's in your investment building, especially ADA, that's really big these days. If you don't have an ADA compliant website, you, you end up in litigation. Anything else?
He's working, he's working on the ADA. He's aware of it and he's going to make it ADA compliant. Right. Also, we're going to take one big giant step with Andy this first time around. But then there's going to be quite a bit of fine tuning going on after that. So we might not get it all done in the first, the first step, but we're going to basically remap the whole site. And we're going to break up bits and parts that are really confusing where there's too much unrelated information in one place. We're going to break it all out and, and try to make it all make sense. And then we will, you know, definitely begin to hear from everybody who uses different parts and find out what, what you like, what you don't like, what's missing. And we're going to just keep plugging away at it till we get it just right.
Thank you, because I spent literally, can't say not hundreds of hours on that site during the last three weeks here.
And, oh, did I, and this, Mr. Johnston, if you could, if you could let me know, I'd be happy to share my phone number with you.
That's exactly what I would like before I leave this. I want, I'd like your phone number and I will be in contact with you a little later than tomorrow afternoon to give you a heads up.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I just want to thank all of you for allowing me to help a little bit with the webpage. Thank you for your help.
Thank you for your help. That's great. Okay, any other public comments on this? Ah, yes, hand up. Julie?
Hey, guys. Thank you for noticing me here. I would like to just request that on the next revision, that stuff that is really pertinent is not only found in the Power's Creek district. That is, I always doubt that the web designer suggested that material would be only put there. So I would just like to see more of main page accessibility to anything that is current as far as projects and proposed projects for the city. Very accessible on our main as well as updating our recorded videos that we have not uploaded yet. Those are really critical resource for our community and our staff in council to review. And we have a little chunk missing that I'd love to see when the website's uploaded. Maybe there's a whole access. I know we're talking about this later. Maybe we could, but I recognize you. So maybe we could join that up a little bit and catch up with that kind of ten minutes and stuff to help some length in that. Thank you.
Well, just say, we have a plan for all that. That, that community button that includes Powers Creek is, is going to be broken out into a whole bunch of different pages so that things are a lot clearer and, and everything is where it belongs instead of kind of mix and match. Or it might not meet, it might not match some of the other items on the page. So, so we're going to spend a good amount of time to break out stuff and make it easier to find and understand.
For Blue Lake, we're not Powers Creek, so it should be under Blue Lake.
Okay, any further public comments? Any action? This is direction to staff to be aware that this is ongoing and keeping you aware of what's next. Okay. Item 12, let's move on then to item 13. This is our public notice process. Just general information about our public noticing process. On paper notifications will be posted in three places, the Grange, the post office, and city hall bulletin boards. These notices will also appear on the city website in the appropriate locations. Or location, I just want to. 72-hour minimum notice requirement is strictly observed. The city government Facebook page will be used to announce when all legal notices have been posted. All council members and commissioners will be notified if a meeting has been canceled by email and if within 24 hours of the scheduled meeting by phone, text as well if desired by the individual council or commission member. So there is consideration making the preceding Friday the posting day for all meetings occurring the following week to simplify the process and give more notice to all. And there's a consideration of posting all agenda packets along with the agenda. So this is for discussion.
I think it's quite a busy project.
It does.
At least on council, you know, if the, if the meetings are spaced out more, where there's not three or four meetings in a week and all of that has to be done, that could be tricky. It could be tricky, but my, my observation is that there's been a few times where, where somebody had to post something on a Sunday to, to meet, to meet the 72-hour requirement or, you know, something like that. And so, and also possibly that, you know, if, if something's a little further out, for a Wednesday meeting, something has to be posted no later than Sunday. And for a Tuesday meeting, no later than Saturday. So it's, it made sense to me that possibly if we just picked Friday as our, just post everything for next weekday, it would just kind of alleviate some of the, oh, you know, did I get that done in time? How much more time do I have? You know, it's not on my Friday to-do list. So, and then maybe it gets forgotten because actually it has to be done by Sunday. So that's just, that, that was where that was coming from. And just to make it easier for staff to know that everything for next week has to get done by Friday. And it can get done earlier, you know, but it might just make it a little easier for everybody to know where their, where their agenda deadline days are and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm concerned about Fridays being overloaded as they are because Friday, at least the Friday before this meeting, these meetings every month, is very, very busy for staff to get things together.
Yeah, but I think we're the only meeting that happens this week, I think.
We have a tremendous amount of meetings and we have a very, very small staff to take it all of it done. And I, we do not have the staff capacity to, to take on more at this point. We really don't. We have numerous commissions. We have council meetings. Sometimes we have multiple council meetings.
So staggering it is better really for you.
It's better for me to stick with the process that's been established through the Brown Act.
This is adding to your.
Well, it's making things do earlier than they currently are. There, that also impacts when items have to be provided to the city. It impacts noticing processes. I, I don't know that, I don't know what impacts this has for, for Brown Act when the public has a right to present items within a certain timeframe. And if we're already posting agendas and packets possibly prior to any of that, that process, I don't know what the impacts of that would be. But I can tell you that, that we're, we completely do not have the capacity to, to move up noticing procedures. I mean, even for city council, I mean, there's times where I'm copying city council packets at, you know, eight o'clock at night and try and get them out because it's just, it's, there's so much work involved in trying to put together a packet. With, we have to do all the agenda reports. We have to have all the supporting documentation. Sometimes we're waiting on legal reviews. There's, there's just a lot to it. And for a small staff, we don't have the capacity to take on more.
So I, I, I wrote this in a manner that was, was just detailing what already exists or what I believe already exists, not that it's changing anything. So when I look at our calendar, we have Wednesday, we have Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday meetings. So Monday meetings have to be, one, two, Monday meetings have to be posted on a Friday.
Correct.
To make, make the 72 requirement, 72-hour requirement. Tuesday meetings would have to be posted on Saturday and Wednesday meetings would have to be posted on Sunday. So you're saying that you'd rather be able to post on a weekend than post them all on Friday?
There's times where we may have to depending upon the packet and the materials that we're still waiting for. We may not get everything in time. I don't see that there's a problem with the current posting because we're meeting the regulations that are set forward in the Brown Act. So I'm concerned about changing anything or putting additional burdens or changing any timelines for material to come in. And we also have our commissions who, you know, they're, they're just regular residents. They all, you know, have jobs and they're still trying to get us information. And, you know, we put together their agendas for them, but they're still funneling information to us. And so it's putting an additional burden on people to be able to provide the documentation that's required. I don't know. That's just my opinion and my position as staff. That I think continuing with what's legally mandated for us to follow protects the city and it protects the process.
Okay. So if we keep it the way it is, then people have to work on Saturdays and Sundays.
Sometimes we do. I usually work Saturdays and Sundays anyways.
All right. So, so.
For discussion.
Yeah, sure, sure.
The real problem is the amount of staff people that we have and the amount of work that's entailed as well as the packets that have to be put together for the various commissions. I can see where staggering it is probably better in a way, but it, it does mean that you have to be aware of your, of your timelines. But you are, you apparently are, so that's not a problem.
Can I add a question? Was, has there been a time in the last six months where a meeting had to be canceled because the deadline was not made? So all the cancellations that have happened have been for other reasons?
Usually it's because of a lack of a forum. And we sometimes don't know that until, it can be the day of a meeting. It can be a day before a meeting, but there's times when commissions just can't have, for whatever reason, won't have a forum.
Okay. So, and on that note, what is your notification process for notifying members of these commissions that there's been a cancellation?
We usually send them a message or give them a call, send them a text message.
I mean, we just found out this evening that Chris wasn't going to be here. I knew that Angela was going to be out of town, but I just found out tonight that Chris wasn't going to be. I mean, if one of you had suddenly taken the L or myself, we would not have a meeting.
Sure, sure.
Essentially, so, you know, it all depends on a lot of individual cases.
May, I, I was getting ready to look for a planning commission agenda and, and I didn't find it. And so I commuted, I contacted one of the planning commissioners and, and I asked, hey, do you know, you know, you guys have a meeting tomorrow night? And I got an answer back, you know, a while later. He had to go to the post office to look at the bulletin board of the post office to find out that their meeting was canceled. And so that indicated to me that, and he told me that none of, you know, none of the commissioners were notified of that cancellation. So I thought, okay, well, there was, you know, there was miscommunication there somehow. And then last, our last Parks and Rec Commission meeting, I left work early because I had that meeting and I got home, checked my email and found out that earlier that day I'd been canceled. And so had I known that, you know, earlier, like, if I'd gotten a text message, I wouldn't have had to stop working early, you know, to get home for a meeting. So, so I'd just like to set up a situation where everybody who's serving on these commissions has an opportunity to, to be notified in, in the manner that they prefer. So if it's within the 24 hours, if they get a phone notification or whatever they want. So that, so that we're, we're being respectful of the time of all of our volunteers and that sort of thing.
Yes, I agree. And I, I really appreciate all of our commissioners and, and people that come forward to volunteer on them because that's what it is essentially. But they're, but we're all human and this, these kinds of things just happen.
Sure, sometimes.
You don't know till the last minute that someone is not, is not going to show up.
Right, so that's just what I say. If it's, if it's within 24 hours, maybe, maybe we send a text message. If it's, you know, a lot of us, you know, look at our email every morning and maybe we look at it when we get home at night after work, but we're not going to be seeing it during the day. So, so if we could just, you know, come up with something that we can all live with, that I think is just a little bit more than what we have now, which I, I haven't been able to. able to, I haven't seen articulated, you know, as detailed as what I wrote here. So I'm just liking, I'm just trying to put something down on paper that everybody knows this is what it is. And when somebody gets confused or whatever, we just go, hey, this is what it looks like. So if this doesn't answer your questions, then we'll go from there.
So our commissioners have a way of letting, letting you know or that, how they want to be notified through either texting or emailing or something like that when there's a cancellation?
Yeah, I mean, we have a commissioner contact list with phone numbers and emails. But like I said, we don't always, you know, these are, these are volunteer commissions. We don't always get notified either that they're not going to show up. We've had that problem several times with, especially during Parks and Rec, during basketball season. We had several people that, you know, had games or coached and didn't let us know that there was a conflict. So it's, staff doesn't always know either until, I mean, I've shown up at meetings and not had a forum, you know. So I don't think, it's not that anyone's trying to do anything, you know, shady or anything. It's just the nature of volunteers that, you know, sometimes have lives that impact their capacity to attend a meeting.
I'm not asking you to bust out a crystal ball or anything. I'm just asking you to, to be willing to send a notification in real time when you find out something the same day as a meeting or within 24 hours. Just based on my own experience from that, you know, from last month, it would be really helpful to just get a text message and say, you know, no commission meeting tonight for whatever reason. I'm not rushing to help.
And further discussion on this?
I'm going to do the best we can on it. That's all I can tell you about it. I mean, I've been with city government.
I'm saying that, you know, there's really nothing.
Can we agree that we use the city government Facebook page to announce the notices, like the agendas and the notices?
Well, are they doing that already?
No. It's not that used at all.
Okay.
I believe the agenda was on the city Facebook page.
The government page? Okay.
We have some people that are not on social media.
And I, I mean, just in staff's defense, there's a lot. I mean, I think, you know, when you're, there's a lot of noticing, there's a lot of process. And if something gets missed, it's not to try and deny anyone information. We always make sure that we post in our normal locations. And so if a Facebook page gets missed, it's not with an intent to deny anyone access to information. We're, like I said, we have very limited staff and resources and it's a lot of work and we're doing the absolute best that we can with the resources that we have.
Thank you. I'm not saying that you're not doing your best. I'm just asking to clarify that one item because we talked about it a few months ago and I hadn't seen that page used.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public concerning this item? Mr. Sawatsky? Kent Sawatsky?
They do have these terms. Kent Sawatsky, I think noticing is extremely important. And I do understand your staff is overworked and limited. I always, Smo County has something called the common sense principle. And I don't know if it's doable, but I, my understanding is you have what, four or five commissions, planning commission, you folks, maybe three others? And it just seems to me that instead of having two or three of those in one week, you're able to stack that, then the work is dispersed equally over the month. You don't have two or three meetings. And it's preferable to have them on Tuesdays. And the reason being is, I've seen that, seen that work pretty well, you know, with you folks, when you get yours out on Friday. But the Monday, when you have planning commission on Monday, that gives us just about no time to actually get a hold of Gary Reeves or get a hold of you or get a hold of staff on questions of the planning commission. And so I highly recommend that you consider having your commissions and your meetings on Tuesday or Wednesday. The, this pattern off of what Humboldt County does. Humboldt County Planning Commission meetings come out on Friday, usually by four o'clock, and that's for a Thursday meeting. Now, now, they have large packets to go through, but that's the time that's required by staff, by the county or planning commission to go through these packets. And you guys will be receiving very large packets here for your planning commission. So you might just not invent the wheel, but possibly consider moving that day on out a little bit. Everybody has a chance to read, you know, 300-page packet until we have them, if they have everything on the agenda, you know, that they proposed for last meeting. It would have been a 300-pound, 300-page packet. That's the suggestion. And then I did do wish you to, like when Alex Rickert was sitting here, he said he had some problems with some councils before. You did, you had some rogue councils. They said, we're not going to do the housing element. And so now we're in trouble because of that. The other thing they did is they, they, according to Bob Brown, and I spoke to Bob, he is the employer of, he's the main person at the firm there. And I cut my key on planning, Bob here, when I was on the planning commission at 25 years old. Anyway, so I said, well, why don't we have...
Are we still talking about this?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Notification. So, so the notification process, if you Google it, for public hearings is very important. And the process, and I highly recommend that you have staff bring you that process, it says, "The public hearing shall be notified 10 days in advance in a paper of general circulation." Well, this rogue council and their, their manager at that time said, "We're going to determine there is no such paper." And so when I was talking to Bob Brown, I said, well, I said, let's pretend we're in court and I'm, I'm litigating this. I said, Bob, according to the county, every single one foot all through around the city is notified by the time standard. And, and so that is the public notification paper and it does exist. We also have another one, which is the journal. And so anyway, I get my time up, but I highly recommend that you get into that, take a close session, even look at that, because in my opinion, your, your notification of public hearings is not sufficient and anybody could challenge your decision. And then you have a do-over. So you might want to have an ad hoc committee or something to investigate the need for noticing of public hearings. And it's different than your meetings. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. All right, there's two hands on Zoom, Lynn Glenn, and then I think Julie again?
Thank you, Eddy. So I would really have to just see this on your agenda because this has been a concern I've had for a while, particularly for people who don't have the internet. And I think there's been, there's been a discussion about the Brown Act in other cities that's posting after five o'clock on Friday for a Monday meeting. It really doesn't feel 72 hours notice anyway without, without the internet. And there's been some discussion like that. I appreciate how much work the staff puts into these agendas and noticing, this agenda album, those that have taken hours and hours and hours of work. And I found my thoughtfully first, I had a planning commission meeting on a Monday, trying to read the housing element online because it was a huge document and I was wishing I could see it in paper. And I think I saw somewhere that the, one of the locations for the documents for public viewing is the library, is that correct? And I was thinking, well, if our library was open Saturday, if the city made sure that the documents were available in the library on Saturday, that might help people who need to see it in paper for a Monday meeting. And so one question is, is that a posted location for public viewing of city documents?
Oh, no.
You know, Eddy or Lizette, just may I do know?
It depends on the document. So the housing element, large documents like that, that we try and increase circulation are usually posted here at Skinner Store and at the library for public access. So yes, it is available at the library. It was also at the school as well.
At the school?
So they would be available at the library then to see, to see the person?
Depending on the type of document and the circulation needs to try and generate a larger circulation.
Okay, so some, some documents are not. So council, so just some large documents like the housing element, but not the council packets for instance?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it might, it might be worth, well, something that the council might consider again for accessibility to people without the internet, to think about putting more emphasis on availability at the library for Monday meetings. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is it Julie again? Okay, Julie?
Thank you, guys. I always start my bike. I just want to concur with Lynn. I think she has some great comments and suggestions as, as well as Kent. I do find it a little concerning that the planning commission could have, I mean, maybe I misinterpreted what they said, but they could have received their packets, probably a lot sooner than that. I think anytime we have a very detailed, inclusive packet that, if we can try, especially with material like that that's very online, if you know how to find it, that it's made public and sharing that online, even on your guys' pages and we can, other people can share it too and really circulate it. Also, I think it's important that we are given as much notice on any kind of agreement assignments and stuff like that. That could be something that would be great, going back like a year ago when a lot of stuff was being done, going back tracking minutes, a notification on it is very limited. So I think that's somewhere that we can definitely improve. And I'll confer again with Lynn. Your guys' time is extensive on these projects and dealing with everything you have going on in your dailies in your community. But again, that's what we all signed up for and I do appreciate your time and your efforts.
Thank you, Julie. Any other comment?
You would want to check ADA compliance on what's required for this. And you may have sometime be required to actually have this available in a form that's available to the blind. So you just want to have that in your queue in case you do find that that, somebody comes in. I believe, I believe I could be wrong, but they're entitled actually to request a copy of that to accommodate them. And you might want to have access for that translation.
That brings to mind, there is a, there is a part of the Brown Act that states that agendas need to be on a website in a format that is searchable. And I forget all of the, all of the actual content of that.
Yeah.
So that's something that we're working on. Right, right. And, well, actually he didn't, but that's something we brought to him, took his attention yesterday in the meeting. So anyway, it's something I found accidentally, but it'll, it'll require that in the future, the agenda, the agenda packets that we publish on our website will need to be published in a certain way, where we actually upload the, we're actually uploading the actual PDF document rather than a, I'm going to say this wrong, so I'm not going to say it, but there's a way to do it where you upload the actual document, the actual text document you're working on, as opposed to a picture of the document. That makes it searchable and indexable.
He seemed to know a lot about that though, because when we talked about it, he had worked with that, with the ADA compliance of...
ADA, but this is not ADA. This is something else. This is Brown Act.
Oh, Brown, okay.
Which is separate. Yeah.
Okay. So the question, is there any other public comment? Julie again? I should just wrap it up. Mandy, isn't it the specific commissioners that decided what nights they were able to meet? Because a lot of people have various work problems and responsibilities, so that I think the reason that everything is not on a Tuesday and a Wednesday, wouldn't it be nice if everything was like that? But we're accommodating our commissioners a lot of times when it comes to what night they've decided to meet. So we leave it up to the commissioners themselves to decide what works for the majority of them. That's why we have them all over the place. And again, it's not for any nefarious reason or to make things difficult.
Do they make the decision on a yearly basis then when they change over? I'm just curious if they have a procedure.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we have to give them a certain amount of autonomy as far as when they can meet. It's just, it's just not going to be perfect world, but it's, you know, government can be a little messy. But it's what they have decided works for them. And I'm sure when they get a new commissioner, then they look at it again because the new commissioner may say, you know, that night doesn't work for me. So then they move things around accordingly. So that's just one of those things that has to, has to be the way it is. So if there is no further direction of us on this item?
Just wondering if we can start putting a one agenda packet in the library for, for all meetings?
For all meetings.
Well, all the, any meeting that is, any meeting that is going to be noticed on a Friday, we could put, if we could put one packet in the library so that over the weekend, if somebody wants to go to the library on Saturday and review the packet on paper, that's available. So that would require printing one more packet and leaving it in the library.
Well, you could put it in their, their mail slot.
No, because every commission's not going to be noticed on Friday. So that's basically going to be, it's going to essentially be city council and planning commission. And maybe one of the, I have to go back to my map.
City council and planning commission. Planning is on Mondays and city council's on Tuesdays.
And those are the, those are the two that are going to have the biggest packets in general. I mean, I think some people have a hard time navigating through, you know, big fat packets on computers. So there's, you know, I've talked to some folks that only have a phone, you know, and they're trying to read stuff.
Well, yeah, that's very difficult. How do staff feel about doing that?
I think just putting it in their books slot.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
They have access to the library.
Yeah, we can let Kim know. It's usually Kim down at the library. Let her know that something's going to happen. Yeah. She'll be seeing these packets and she'll be wondering why. They're there. This is why. All right, any other direction for staff on this item? We will move on then to item, okay, 13. Next one is item 15, animal control update. And you have had a conversation with Humboldt County Sheriff's Office on this item. And I know that the Public Safety Committee meeting, they discussed this item as well. So there's the update on our animal control issue.
I was hoping to have just a little more detailed information, but I wasn't able to, to get that. So I want to address this Public Safety Commission working on this project. I went to the Public Safety Commission meeting and I looked at their agenda item, which indicated that they were going to be looking at the full animal control issue, including enforcement and a leash law. I got to the commission meeting and Mandy corrected them and told them they were only being asked to look at a potential leash law. I went back home, I looked at the video again of our discussion from that meeting where we talked about more than just the leash law. And we specifically asked that the commission look into possible enforcement steps that, that we could take in terms of, you know, possibly giving citations, possibly having, you know, anything and everything. I mean, we were just kind of really, really struggling here and, and Lynn brought us the idea of going to the commission and to get some help. And so, so I was disappointed to see that, that the scope that we asked them to look at was narrowed. And so I want to address that. And also, and again, I, when I sat there at that meeting, I thought to myself, well, I don't think, this is not how I remember it. So I went home and I looked at the video. And the video was more in line with my memory. So I'm glad I'm not losing my mind. But also, I'm glad we have this tool of the video to help us remember what we're talking about if we take terrible notes. So that's helped me a few times. Anyway, so I would like to reiterate that we'd like the Safety Commission to look at a bigger, a larger scope than just the leash law, because I believe that's what our conversation entailed last, our last meeting. And then I'd also like to share that... And then I'd also like to share that I watched a city council meeting for Trinidad, and Trinidad has done a lot of work with their animal control issues. They're, they're putting up new signage all over the city, they're, they've, you know, they're really reinforcing their leash law, and they're also in talks with Humble County Animal Control to, for animal control to be full-time, animal control for the city of Trinidad. And, and so, in talking to Andre Hale last week about that issue, she indicated to me that she felt that Blue Lake, that it was completely possible for Humble County Animal Control to serve as our primary animal control, as well as Trinidad's, where it would be a full-time, you know, full-time availability thing. You know, once again, that's a contracting issue between us and the Humble County Sheriff's Office and animal control specifically. And that would be negotiated by the same individual, Captain Quinell, who contract, who we do our contracts with for Sheriff Services. So that's, you know, and still the option, the option exists for us to alter our, our current contract, just to change a little bit in the way that animal control is authorized to respond.
Saying, Pat.
And, and so we, we still have that option to do a small change, or we have an option to do bigger changes. And, and I think that it would be appropriate, we've been talking about this, this issue every month since, I believe December is when we first started, we haven't actually solved any problems or changed anything. I think it's time for the council to, to, you know, try and make, make a step forward somehow. And, and so I would really like to open up conversations with the Sheriff's Office on both of these items, and get some, some really, really concrete information, languages, you know, languages, exactly what we can and can't do, what it's going to cost, when can we do it if we choose to, this sort of thing. So.
Well, Trinidad has also contracted with a private company.
Right.
Looking into some of their issues.
Right, and Mandy's had conversations with that same company and made a presentation to our Public Safety Commission as well, and that happened not this last month, but the month before, I believe. So, so yeah, they may be able to help us in different animal control. Correct, it's not. It's just, you know, security.
Correct, in general. Yeah.
Oh, and the other thing I learned is that, you know, there's, there's all different kinds of schools, there's animal handling schools, so we could potentially have some of our, somebody who already works for the city go to a, you know, some sort of training to learn to handle animals if we wanted to empower, you know, our own staff to, to catch dogs.
Which we had years ago. We had our own dog catcher, and she was like an animal whisperer almost. She was able to get animals under the back of her truck with almost magical powers. But, and I know that our staff actually does quite a bit when it comes to strays. I mean, I've often been in the office where there's been some little critter running around, and it's been, "Oh, that's so-and-so's dog," and it was out, and now here it is. So in a small town, you can do creative things like that, but I think it, it would be interesting to find out how much extra it would cost to have a little more coverage.
Very, yeah.
I think it's important to find out.
Yeah.
So we need to look at the cost especially.
And how to enforce it.
Right.
Right. And the other thing is, if we did contract with Humble County to do all our animal control enforcement, wouldn't be our problem anymore. And there would be enforcement capability through that contract, because the Humble County Sheriff's Office would be our enforcement, our enforcement tool, our enforcement, you know, facilitator. So if they came out here and they gave somebody a citation, we don't have to deal with it, you know? That person is now answering to the Humble County Sheriff's Office, not the city.
And we also wanted, wanted to say, based on what the Public Safety Commission has done, it sounded like they made a decision on the leash law.
You know, I did, I didn't have a chance to talk to, to the person on the back phone call, but I looked at that return call, so I don't know exactly where they are in their process, but I know that they were ready, willing, and able to look at the whole picture before their commission meeting last week, because I also spoke to somebody on that commission, and they were ready to, ready to go to town. They were already completely familiar with the ordinances that we have on the books, and they were ready to look into all that, and to look at the whole picture and, and parts of that. So, so I, I think they're great, and they're, you know, very familiar with all this stuff, more so than probably some of us are, because they've been looking at it, they've already been looking at it for some time, they've been on that commission and acting for a time. So, so yeah, I would like to reiterate that we'd like them to look at the whole picture. I would like to absolutely go to the Sheriff's Office and find out what all of our, all of our options are, and what they, what they, how they could be implemented, what they would cause, so that we can make an informed decision.
And the next Public Safety Commission meeting will be in June. What do they mean?
They meet the first Monday of the month.
June 5th. Yeah, I think that's a good idea to direct the Public Safety Commission to look at the entire picture, as well as specifically the leash law, and whether we can change our ordinance and make an amendment to it. And then again, the cost of what extra control would be. Any further discussion from council before I listen?
Is licensing going to be addressed here? Here, I got, I got my letter saying that my licenses are due.
I think licensing is not a problem. Is that not a huge problem?
Oh, is it? Because we have a lot of people who don't license their dogs.
Okay.
Or that's a big part of it.
So, and that's already an ordinance, is it not? Or do we need an ordinance for that?
No, we already have. You, you have a fairly comprehensive animal order.
It's just an enforcement.
And Humble County Sheriff already has the authority to enforce all of the city's municipal codes, so there shouldn't be a problem with, with enforcement. If there's a violation of something, like you don't have something in place, if you don't have a leash law, there's nothing for them to enforce.
Right, but what do they do? You have issues for, with the licensing. How do you enforce licensing? Is there?
Well, I mean, monetary? The license is $15. The license, honestly, dog licensing in, in Blue Lake puts us in the hole. It takes us more staff time to try and track down people, send letters, track data than what we receive in revenue, so it's a loss already. So trying to get the sheriff to come out and try and do some enforcement or licensing is just, one, is completely outside their purview, and they would never want to be a part of that, and two, it would cost you so much money to try and deal with it that it doesn't make any monetary sense for the city to do that. I mean, it's like $10, $15 a dog.
And what about the idea of contracting for more time as we're the animal control officer here?
That would be something that we have to talk with HCSO, because they actually have those resources.
And I was told that they're hiring somebody new, so as, and as soon as they, they have that new person onboard, they absolutely have enough staff to do it. So they're increasing their staff by one.
And we are in the middle of a two-year contract with the sheriff, is that correct?
Yeah, we're going to be coming up to negotiations. Soon, we'll be looking at some substantial increases, that'll be something that we need to consider, our capacity to, to continue with the services that we currently have.
This is actually very timely to be discussing this idea as well. Any further discussion from council before I open it up to public? Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? I have to keep track, I see hands up there as well. It's tricky, it's a real nail. It's a nail, it's a nail breaker, is what it is.
Pull those eyes.
Takes two people.
Pull it up.
We will not be using up your time for this.
No, carry on. Listening, I'm listening. All right.
So I wanted to let you know Eli, I think it's Napka's last name, something close to that. I consider him a friend over there in Trinidad, and there's no reason for us to envy him. A lot of things, we have so much in common, I highly recommend that you both get his phone number. He has an answering machine, you can leave a message with him, and he'll get back to you, so that's a nice thing about Eli. And regarding the dog issue, I recall, just like Adam does, and we used to have a very function factor, it's actually something in your general plan, if you ever take the time to learn, to specify, within the industrial zone, we are able to have, we had two dog cages down there, if I recall. So that's something that I recommend you fire up and have that, and strongly suggest you get the training for one or two of your staff. Usually was, somebody, you may not have a dog whisperer, but at least, it sounded like your staff does, that they, you know, they're able to take care of little people. But anyway, that's the, your least expensive way to do it, you compensate them with a little bit more money, and then you don't have outside costs for the sheriff department. And, and so I strongly recommend we go back to the old thing. It wasn't broken, I don't know why we don't have it now, but the people know the dogs, they know the family, they know where to take them to, and then you put them in there instead of taking them to the pound when you pick them up, and they call the owner, say, "Hey, it's $25 a dog, got it out, it's not licensed, you need to come down and pick up your dog. Before you pick it up, you're going to have to pay for your license." And part of the problem is the license. I have no problem with the license being increased, we have economy of scale. If you have twice as many licenses out there, you're not going to have twice as much cost, and maybe we'll hit a break even the way we have. But that's going to bring the problem, lack of enforcement and licensing, that enables you to put the dog back to its owner. It's a good win. I hate to see those dogs out there in those little cages, but sometimes it's a lesson for them, maybe they stay at home. I think after you speak on this, I highly recommend you, I've used Eli as a really good source, he's quite approachable, happy to talk to people, because we have the same world in which we live, kind of similar.
Other public comment on this item? Yes. And then there are two people on Zoom that have their hands up that I believe need to be called on.
I had a form to say, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about this issue, and I've seen it twice now, where I see that we're coming to an end, or like an end in sight, and then we take new steps back. And I just want to make sure that the minutes from this meeting will reflect that the Planning Commission has permission to address and review dog ordinances, including leash law, but not limited to, because it was kind of a waste of time. At the last meeting, we discussed it for about an hour, and then at the end of it.
Public safety.
Sorry, public safety, no, planning. At the end of our discussion, then we were told that we actually needed to, after the public had researched and given their comments and everything, then we were told we were only discussing the leash law. So that was kind of a disappointment and a waste of everyone's time. So yeah, I just want to make sure that that's on there, and I would, I mean, I don't know that I can ask, but I would really recommend that you guys do watch the other videos of the other meetings, because there's a lot of, I don't want to say cross-contamination, or, I don't know, they're intertwined very much, so, and I think it's really something we need to address, either limiting commissions' involvement in city-made decisions, or supporting them to get information better, something needs to happen, because it's two meetings now where I've seen that there's just a big disconnect from the council on these commissions, and that doesn't serve anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Back to council, what has you? Oh, with the hands, thank you, thank you. Lynn Glenns?
Julie?
Oh. Lynn Glenn?
Thank you, Eli. Yeah, I was at both meetings, too, the City Council meeting and the Public Safety Commission meeting where this was discussed, and I was also surprised when Mandy limited that the Public Safety Commission did form a committee, a subcommittee, to discuss these ordinances, and then Mandy told them they were limited to discussing all of the leash law, or whether or not we should be, I think, increase the leash law. Again, I've heard of both ordinances, and I think Elise is correct in talking about enforcement, because they're really, if you have existing ordinances, it is they were enforced, the main problems seem to be loose dogs, caught by loose dogs, and if loose dogs were, were kept at home, I think that could go a long way towards keeping our community safer than the incidents that we had where dogs were attacked, and the concerns that Trinidad has about people being attacked. And I think enforcement is also a issue, I think Mandy's concerned about staff, and she should be. Education can really go a long ways. I think most people want to obey the law. I don't know if everyone knows what the law is saying right now, but if you could educate people about the loose dog law, educate them about licensing, because really, licensing not only brings money to the city, but it also requires rabies vaccination. And if we have dogs in town that are not vaccinated against rabies, Blue Lake is one of the areas that occasionally have rabies fossils, do wild animals. So rabies vaccination is really important, particularly in our area. So I think if Public Safety Commission could look at education, when people get their licenses, maybe help them with their responsibilities, our drivers, let everybody else know that if they see a loose dog, what they should do, that they should call. I think that might really help make, make it safer. I'm really glad for discussing this issue.
Thank you, Lynn. Now Julie?
Okay, Julie again, and I'm glad I got to listen to Lynn's comments, they're very, very thought-provoking as usual. Thank you, Elise, for keeping this up, you know, I have a broken record on this again, squeaky wheel gets degrees, right? So, and I think the reason why I keep chugging on this more importantly is, you know, I've suffered the consequences of dogs that are unfortunately owned by bad, irresponsible owners. And then I live in town, and I can't complain about a single dog in my neighborhood, except for the cat that came in my yard, and my kid's duck, but you know, what do we do about that? So I think, I'm going to go back to my squeaky wheel. You guys have to have signage, okay? I know you're maybe in the process through going back to the Safety Commission with getting a leash law, I think that's very smart. Not everybody, of course, is going to buy it, of course, you're not going to have the infrastructure to enforce it, but if a situation happens, the owner of the dog, the initiated dad that was not on a leash, is going to be held liable, and I think just having that safeguard is really important to have that there. Not saying we're going to force it, make everybody's life miserable, but if something does happen, there's some safety protocol for people with support, okay? Because you have leash law. You guys are opening yourselves up for a lot of liability, not having that, not having signage, and I keep saying that because I think it's important. I have literally had my horse kick a dog between the eyes, just running at me, me screaming back, "Call your dog, call your dog." And I could, my horse could have killed that dog, whose fault would that have been? You know? It's the reason why I get a little nervous, taking the kids into town with horses more so now than I ever was. You know, it has increased, and dog responsibility has decreased. And I think just promoting the fact that at this point in time, people just need to call 911. Having that public outreach, that's your fastest response that you're going to get, okay? I tell people all the time, getting home, Julie, this happened, Julie, so what do I do? Call 911, they're going to dispatch you out, okay? And then last two dogs, I caught, it literally been a little 299, and the other one, if I were to get into and talk about like dog whispering, and I put in safely in my trailer, if there's ever a situation in town, I'm always available. If it's going to be a situation, we need to house dogs, this is second, that's great, on the website. We could also have it on there, people can contact city for problem dogs, okay? Just a reporting place, that maybe within that dog section, we're listing all these ordinances, we're listing ethics in public, and we're also listing a resource that people can get back to the city and sign in. And then, I'm sorry to take a long time, but doing microchip clinics, okay? Maybe start prioritizing having some vaccine clinics out here, some microchipping clinics out here, just stuff like that to kind of help promote missing in, and, because sometimes fireworks are off again, and it's like, that's all the time, just got me, I'm confused, I'm lost. So, you know, clean that, just work for town, kind of help with all that, that'd be really awesome, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
I hope to make the safety commission, but if not, anybody present tonight would like to just share some of my thoughts and ideas. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment?
Sorry, just looking up an event like for dogs and saying like a fun thing, you know, like come and license your dog.
Yeah, we have those. We have had those in the past.
It took a long time since we had a vaccine clinic. And, and I think that would be really appreciated by folks here if we could pull that off again because vaccinations have become so expensive and so hard to get into clinics to get them done. So I think that'd be really a great, a great idea. We could, and we could maybe make it a little bit of a dog festival along with it, you know?
Yeah, we have had that in the past. It has been very popular. There's a good, good need for it. Any further discussion before we get some direction to staff on this item? Some lots of good ideas coming forward. I think that we do need to go back to the public safety commission for a more thorough discussion about laws pertaining to dogs, not just the leash law. And then looking into the sheriff, since we are going to be approaching our negotiations with him and possibly the cost of extra time. Maybe if it's out of the realm of what we can do, then we find that out. But we need to kind of investigate that. And then the idea of a vaccine clinic for animals. Those were some of the good ideas that I saw.
So I would like to request that we have an actual draft of a leash law at our next council meeting. Along with whatever recommendations the public safety commission is able to give us. They've, they've had a few weeks now to talk about the leash law thing. So I'm, I'm guessing they're gonna be ready to, to make a recommendation about that. And so rather than just have a recommendation and then have to wait another month before we enact the leash law, I'd like to have that leash law slash ordinance drafted so that the council can actually take action on it.
On the 27th, yeah, on June 27th.
Why not?
Because your public safety commission is gonna meet the first week of June to go over their recommendation. And then they're gonna bring a recommendation back with the council for consideration. You won't have.
We don't need to wait for their recommendation on this. I think that we're really, we're really ready.
So now you're saying you want to bypass the PSC.
No, I want to bypass you. I want to bypass all the hurdles and the roadblocks. This is ridiculous, Mandy. This is ridiculous.
Councilmember Scopani, this is a directive from the council.
I know that.
And you guys directed the PSC to bring back a recommendation on the leash law. You, yourself and council, took on the question of a larger issue with animal control. This is your, this is what you just brought back. So I don't see where there's a hurdle. It's just a process. You have to give them time to be able to work through an issue. They need once a month. They're volunteers. They have an ad hoc committee. They have an ad hoc committee that's working on it. And I don't understand why they wouldn't be given the ability to.
So are they gonna draft the ordinance for us?
No, absolutely not. An ordinance gets drafted by your legal team.
So we can draft that ordinance and have it ready. And when they tell us, hey, we recommend, we recommend that you do this. Then we're saying, great, thank you. And give us some more information and how do, how do you want us to implement? And here we are. We're ready to move forward on this.
I don't think you're understanding the process of drafting. An ordinance is a legal document. It's your law. And there's a lot that goes into making sure that it's compliant. You may have to change other areas of your municipal code to make sure that it's compliant and consistent. It's not a quick process.
So how long is it gonna take?
I don't know. I don't know what the recommendation is. Your legal attorney would draft the ordinance for you based upon the recommendation from the council, which would be based, I would assume, on the recommendation from your public safety commission.
It would mean, it would be either amending our ordinance or writing a whole new ordinance.
Right. You may have.
So ordinances are a big deal. Ordinances are laws.
So that's understandable. If it's not codified, then it's not enforceable. And you also need to make sure that you make all the proper filings and that it's an enforceable action. You can't just make something up if it's not enforceable.
We have a whole bunch of enforceable actions. We have a whole bunch of enforceable.
Okay, we, we can't hear with the audience being a little noisy.
This would be adding one more enforceable ordinance to the cadre of enforceable ordinances that we already have, correct? Yeah, we already have a lot of them. None of which are a leash law. Right.
Right. We decided years ago, people in those days did not want a leash law. There was a big backlash. I mean, there were more people than are here now that were against the leash law.
Well, we put out a survey monkey to see who wants a leash law.
I mean, you know, that's why we have commissions, so that they can go through their process and they can come back and say, yeah, well, times have changed. Now 30 years, 40 years later, people want their dogs on leashes. You know, who knew? And government works slowly, unfortunately. I know we want things to happen fast. But fortunately, government works slowly. Been in it a long enough to know.
I understand. And I'll try to be working.
It's a legal, it's a legal document. It's very important that it's done correctly and legally. And I know it, it sounds tedious and it sounds like, why can't we have a tedious, but they just can't.
There are certain things that can happen. I think Mandy knows.
No, I don't. I don't, Councilmember Scopani. Like to say it out loud.
I would.
You pointed comments towards me.
That at our last, the first time we asked you to go to the Humbo Cani Animal Control, we asked you to do it and you waited six weeks to make your first contact with them.
All right. I don't know what that's all about, but we're gonna get past that. It sounds to me like we are going to let our government system work, which means that we have a commission that works on these items. And they will come back to us and tell us what they have decided. And based on that, we will have to either fashion a whole new ordinance or we'll have to amend our ordinance, which again, is a legal document and very serious. It has to be done right. It has to be done with our attorney. Just people together quickly. I know that's not popular, but that's the law. Any further discussion on this item? Let's move on then to, let me get my notes here.
Should we, should we try to organize, we ask for, ask for community involvement to, to create a vaccine clinic? Maybe, maybe come up with a, another ad hoc committee and ask for community involvement to talk about, to deal with signage, to actually try to start implementing some signage. Maybe create a vaccine clinic, you know, vaccine microchip clinic, something like that.
Do you remember who used to do it years ago, Mandy? I don't either.
After Oliphant used.
Oh, it was a veterinarian that did it.
Yeah. I mean, there are certain vaccines.
You guys can get neuter scooter. You can hook up with neuter scooter. They go out to Lupa. I don't want to get rude. In Trinidad, I have some resources. I'll send to Elise, okay? And Ali and Lupa helps out a lot with that. I'll send some resources to the city.
Thank you.
I, I don't own a dog, so you know, I don't have any knowledge about this. Okay. We will look into that same clinic. It sounds like we will let the process go with the public safety commission.
Who is looking into the vaccine? Staff to do that?
Well, I would like to kind of know how that would look, you know? I mean, it's.
Does that have to be a city sponsored thing? Well, it would be, the city would be involved if licensing was part of that, right? But we could create that without, we don't need staff to create a vaccine clinic.
Are you offering?
Sure.
I'm just trying to say who's actually doing this. So we're not just saying it's gonna happen unless.
I mean, it used to happen, I think.
Is there anybody out here that wants to help?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. Winona and Angela and myself, we're the new vaccine clinic committee.
Could this involve licensing as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, they usually do it together.
We'll see about, we'll see about getting vaccines, microchips, and, and then we'll have a six stop number that'll do this. And it'll probably be on a weekend.
It should be, yeah.
It'll be like on a Saturday morning, like maybe from nine to noon or something like that. Probably, hey, hey, why don't we do it at across from the post office at, at the town square?
That's a possibility. As long as there's plenty of dog.
And every doggy bag.
Whatever that's called, doggy bags.
They just built a dog vaccine today.
Every dog got in the oldie.
Okay. Okay, so we have kind of a, we kind of, vaccine thing kind of went a little off topic on agenda. So let's get back on topic. Okay, our next item of business is number four. City council meeting, video recordings, update and discussion. The city council has directed staff to research options for recording and managing council video recordings. Staff have reached out to various cities to request information on their systems, as well as to access Humble, the city's partner agency, to recommend a system that will provide an enhanced professional option. Access Humble has made a site visit to review the city council chambers for recording options, including camera type and placement and microphone sound options. Access Humble is preparing an equipment recommendation for the city's consideration, along with a recommendation on the most efficient and effective method of transmitting their recordings. Once the information is received, staff is prepared to initiate the equipment purchase. And the funding for this project can come from COVID funding, which hopefully will still be there because the federal government is talking about pulling that away. So there's no action on this item. It's just an updated discussion. It sounds like things are moving forward with access Humble. Is that?
Anything you wanted to add?
No, that's the extent of what I have.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe that you're, that you might allude for?
I'm just waiting for access Humble to provide me the information.
But they came to this building and they looked at what we have and they think it's adequate and that they'll be able to, to record us.
Can you give me the name of the person that you're working with there? Probably the same Mr. Wong.
All right. Any discussion from public on this item?
So. Am I recognized?
Yes, the chair recognizes. For three minutes.
I have, I have major concerns regarding the adequacy of this facility to accommodate large meetings, which you may have happening on a regular basis. And so I highly recommend that you find a system that can be moved to either the Grange or to the gymnasium at Blue Lake, should you need to have meetings at that size. I do not see in the room, and I could be wrong, the posting of maximum occupancy, which is required for this facility. Maybe Mandy can see it's right over there or something. But if you don't have that, if you don't, if you exceed that amount, and I'm just guessing it's 25 or something, it's pretty easy to exceed that. Just I have 120 is what's posted in the supervisor's chambers. And I was speaking to five of the fire people there and, and they, they concurred that if you exceed that, you have to have the fire marshal in attendance at your building. And that's the only way you can exceed that posted, which is required to be posted in all facilities, especially the meeting hall. And so again, I don't see it. I hope someone's gonna point me to it so you're in compliance. But I highly recommend that you comply with that because the city has a major liability should you have more than the posted amount at a meeting. And I think it's necessary to facilitate meetings in larger facilities. I can see some of these things are, when you have a hot topic, like a planning commission meeting where you had standing room only, that meeting should have never gone forward unless you had it posted and you had less occupancy than the posted. Otherwise, you're, you're exposing yourself to unlimited liability. I've always tried to save the money for, I'll speak on this particular topic.
So do we have another big screen that says it on the wall when we go to somewhere, to another place?
Yes, we do. This isn't the one that we put in the box that moves around. Yeah, so we do have a screen that was, that's put in a box. And when we have larger meetings, we do have them at other facilities, like we've had them at the Grange, we've had them at the park.
I recommend next planning meeting, you consider that because of the excessive people you had at the lab. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
Lynn Glenn?
I just want to thank staff for being so responsive to this community concern. I think that there really is a comprehensive approach being taken. I want to thank the council also. Really appreciate all the work on this. Thank you.
And Julie?
I would like to also thank you guys, like Lyndon. This resource is really amazing. I would like to see it outreach to, you know, we're getting in kind of an insight setup that all commissions have access to this. I know Zoom can be cumbersome, but at least making sure the rest of our commissions as well are involved with this process and this evolution. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I agree with Juliana. I would like to see you guys get equipment that we could be able to, and I agree we can, that we could take to different locations. Because meetings aren't always held here and to get public involvement and to keep us up to speed on everything that's going on. There's lots of times I would like Zoom meetings. I've been coming in person meetings since December to numerous, everyone. And so it would be nice to sit home and watch a Zoom meeting. I put in, I volunteer lots of time, too. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I just want, I just want to thank Justin for all that he's done. He's been very, I think, fair. I think he's really stayed out of politics and just done everyone a huge service by being so fair, kind and generous to do that for us all. No matter what side you're on or what you agree with or don't agree with, Justin is doing all of us a service.
Yeah, I have a dollar for you, Justin. I thank you. It's very dear and I hope you keep them at it.
I'd like to pledge, I'd like to pledge half of all of my stipend checks to Justin.
I have been, I have been giving all of my stipend checks to Parks and Recreation for many, many. But anyway, we digress.
Somebody brought the point of Zoom meetings.
Zoom meetings.
I attended, I attended the planning commission meetings in its entirety, of course, last week.
And a lot of people came and asked for that to be Zoomed and asked for planning commission meetings to be Zoomed. And I, I suggested that that be our, our agenda for tonight. But Mandy told me that perhaps it wasn't in the council's purview. So I'm wondering, you said you were gonna ask Ryan, our attorney, if, if making a determination that we should Zoom planning commission meetings within the purview of the city council.
I know that there's a lot of requirements if a, if a commissioner is, wants to Zoom in. Like you have to make sure that you notify where you're zooming from, everyone around you there, like here at home or something.
Yeah, that's a whole different setup.
It's a whole different thing. So actually for public.
Yeah, because the commission was, well, as we all know, the planning commission is a very important component of our city government. And more so, not to diss anybody, but also.
I don't think we're talking about Zoom right now, right?
Well, we're talking about videotaping and recordings and.
Yeah, and that was what we were talking about. Yeah, I know that was brought up, but it doesn't mean that we're gonna go off on another topic. I'm sorry. It's just.
Well, you're right. It's not a law.
Well, you know what? I think what we should do is put that as a future agenda.
Yeah.
If we're gonna discuss it.
We're gonna discuss it. That's a whole different topic.
So we're moving forward, it sounds, on the video recording. Item five, as we move along, is our memorandum of understanding with Red River Coast Energy Authority. And the city of Blue Lake partners with Red River Coast Energy Authority to evaluate energy options and solutions for our community. The city is a member agency of RCEA. The city is a member agency of RCEA, and as such, we rely on RCEA to provide guidance on various levels of project investigation and development. As the city continues to explore energy options for our community, the city has been approached by Redwood Coast Energy Authority to consider options for battery storage projects in the city. City staff is requesting council's authorization to work with RCEA on energy storage provision projects through the execution of the attached memorandum of understanding. So we have that. And it looks pretty straightforward, I'm assuming other cities have done likewise.
We are in a unique situation just because of our, the property on Taylor Way has energy infrastructure that can be put into place to, for green energy. So we're definitely in a different situation than other cities.
Okay.
I have another question, I was wondering, what kind of a footprint is this?
What's going? I don't, we're just, this is just allowing RCEA to help us look at options.
Okay.
And bring back options.
So it's not committing us to anything, which is.
Yes.
Any further discussion for example?
I just think it's great.
Any public comment on this item? The chair recognizes Ken Suachi.
Thank you, Chair. The energy thing is very important, and Mandy pointed out to me before, and I think it was a very thing to understand, the asset we have, captured ultra-power. Anytime you have grid connection to a facility like that that sends power out, you can also send it in. Such ideas as maybe the future for our energy, one of our biggest components is storage. And of course, Elon Musk and Tesla and all these other things, and they're developing rather rapidly, their whole, whole different process as far as storage. Carbon-based, no longer going to be based upon this nasty stuff. But anyway, it's really important for you to consider that as an option for that facility out there to be converted into actually a battery, and the offshore wind, the solar. And of course, location, where redwood energy is going to want, have that as close as they can to the facility. That always works out though. We have a one project, which I don't know if they're involved in, there's this large solar complex out by the, by the Hatchery. That's never come to fruition, thank you. But anyway, we do have a lot of future, they came out and they did an assessment on my property, which is out in the Christie's Fields out there, because that's also close to an energy source, which is current, their current use to be a mill. So anytime you have a brown field, those are perfect places for a battery or these other things. Strongly support you having, having them do an assessment as far as how they can work. Strongly support having an assessment for all your facilities here. If there's grant money to convert open to solar, I understand you're going to do that rather than a generator. And all those kind of options are really great to use this tool. We have also working with shots up at Uncle State, and you have a lot of experts out there in our ranch reals that are specialized. I think it's really good potential for Blue Lake, and I strongly encourage you working with that.
Thank you. And is there a hand, Julie, did you have a comment on this?
Yes, Adeline, I'd like to concur with Ken, and I don't want to get off to agenda items here. You know, Redwood Coast Energy is kind of one of those middlemen, and I think in the time being, yes, we have to take the resources that we have, but for our immediate future, we really should be focusing by being a self-sustaining, energy-efficient city. And yes, prior to my grandfather's passing, we were going through all the same process that the same property of Hatchery was with the solar. And that's void now, however, all the environmental studies are done prior to then giving a proposal or anything like that. So I think we've got a lot of options out here in Blue Lake. We're having to take all that garbage and recycle on reuse, that's causing a lot of resources. A lot of county to do that, it's a lot of grants coming forward for development within the county for those sites of renewable energy. And I think sooner we can prioritize that, you guys, it's really going to be an asset, an extreme asset to our community. I don't want to derail it, but I think it's an important thing to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other further comment? Yes.
Lisa, I just have a question about the location of this site. Is it at the biomass plant where the chips are left, or is it closer to the?
It's closer to the buildings.
Closer to the buildings. This is a storage capacity that we're thinking, is that with the MOU?
That's the, that's the initial idea.
Initial idea, storage.
That would be battery storage, a battery storage facility that would make use of buying, essentially buying energy when it's cheap during the day, and then for solar generation and discharging at night.
Right.
When it's more expensive, and so that would be an asset to RCEA and all of their energy customers.
Okay, so it's closer to the infrastructure that's there, not the.
Correct. The, the grid interconnection is there.
Close to the.
I got them.
For the B and E. Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, I would like to move that we authorize mayor to execute.
Seconded. Question made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Gaffani, to authorize mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding with Redwood Coast Energy Authority. Any further discussion from council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Item six, City of Blue Lake Commission appointments, discussion and action. The City of Blue Lake currently has openings in the Park and Rec Commission, the Economic Development Commission, and the Arts and Heritage Commission. The city has been advertising the vacancies and has received applications from the following individuals: Chair's Bowman, Arts and Heritage Commission, James Brown, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Jayden Clark, Parks and Recreation Commission. And we have their, well, questionnaires and reasons of why they would like to be on these commissions. So we still need somebody for the. Okay, we've got two for Parks and Rec.
Steel need another for Arts and Heritage.
And we still need the Economic Development Commission, right?
Yeah.
But this fills the two vacancies for the Park and Rec. But there's only one. Oh, there's only one.
There was two, we had a commissioner resign to her position.
Oh.
What was that? That was Molly Bowman.
Oh. Okay. So there are two for the Parks and Rec and one for Arts and Heritage Commission. What is the pleasure of the council?
I would like to express my concern that I think that we should not have city employees on the commissions. So for that reason, I feel like Charles Bowman should be on this commission. What is practice been in the past? Is this your view, or is this something that's been practiced in other? Do other people serve on other commissions for city? What is her position at the city?
She is a recreation coordinator and event coordinator. And she's currently an advisory member to the Arts and Heritage already.
So she's stepping down from Arts and Heritage?
Now she is moving from advisory to.
She'd like to move from it to advisory to fill with the mission.
Okay.
Can I ask another question about Arts and Heritage? I'm wondering why we have seven, when all of our other commissions only have five? Why do we have seven members of Arts and Heritage?
At the time, we thought we would have, we have so many artists in town, it was something that we thought would be a good amount of people. Just made that decision. We wanted it to be an uneven number, so it would always be a, it would always be a vote of four to three if that ever happened, but.
Right. Well, and then the whole advisory member thing, what's the purpose of having advisory members, rather than just have folks just come and participate for various topics or whatnot? What's the difference there?
Those are core project-specific activities, that they could take advisory members. If there were specific projects that required or encouraged additional participation or areas of expertise.
But a person could, anybody could come and weigh in on those projects, but not need to be an advisory member to do that, is that correct?
Well, it's a public meetings, you know.
Right.
Anybody can come to a public meeting.
So I've noticed we haven't been able to fill the Arts and Heritage Commission with that seven-member format. So maybe we should consider making it a five-member format like all the other commissions.
See, this commission was just formed recently, and it's just getting started. And this would give you six, and you would just have one outstanding commissioner. Position. Any other comments or questions about this?
I don't have a problem with somebody who works in town also being an advisor or a commissioner on a commission. Personally. Well, maybe we should take a better look at that when we have more time to look into best practice and just the ethical, the potential ethical complications that we can get into with that.
Well, if she's, she's dealing with the park, and this is arts inherited, so it's not, it's not.
She was also a participant in that meeting.
She was an advisory member, that's why she participated.
I know, and she participated very strongly in some of the really objectionable parts of that meeting.
Well, I think there's not, I don't think everything has been said about where those comments came from. I think that's kind of a one-sided position to take that's being perpetuated. And I don't know, I know Councilmember McKay was a party to commentary that was provided at that meeting that they were discussing, which was, which was appropriate when they were provided specific commentary in writing to be made public. I don't think maybe that side of the issue was, been adequately portrayed as well.
Well, I watched the entire meeting.
And did you have the commentary that was provided to them?
Which comment?
That they were reacting to, the public comment that was provided to them?
I have seen that.
There was email to each one of them?
I have seen that.
Well, that was what they were reacting to. And that's what they were commenting on.
That's one person's opinion.
Wasn't.
Okay, so again, we're off topic.
Yeah.
Sorry, but.
Well, I strongly, I strongly oppose the appointment of Charles Bowman to that commission.
Okay.
At this time.
If you're going to take that point, then we can't do it because we don't have enough members.
Well, technically, I could make a, I could make a, I don't usually, but I could, I could make a motion. And we could have a second, and then we could bring it to a vote, and it could be voted down.
Okay, and we have enough of a quorum with two of us?
Yeah, it'd be two to one, one way or the other.
Right.
If it was, if there was a dissension. So, I think, I just wanted to say also that, you know, I really limit my, I actually do not go purposely to other commission meetings. I mean, I go to a lot of meetings, HCOG and HWMA, and I, you know, I have a lot of things I have to tell you about those. But we, we really need to let our commission work on their own through things. I mean, what I discovered when I went to a planning commission meeting a few years ago when I was mayor, it, it started to skew everything. It just suddenly, everybody was looking to see how, what I was there for and what, where my feelings were about it. I mean, it's going to eventually come to us, possibly. So it's something to think about, that we should maybe limit our exposures at other commission meetings. Let them work through it, we can look at the minutes, that's not a problem, you know, but to actually attend some of these meetings, I don't know, that's just what I think you should consider.
Well, I think it's really important that we be fully informed and educated about a lot of these topics. So I went to that meeting, I didn't speak at that meeting, I didn't participate in any way, but I observed.
Okay, so that's a different topic altogether.
Okay.
All right, very good. So let's, so I've worked on this.
I recommend Chair's Bowman, James for the Arts and Heritage, James Brown, Parks and Rec, and Jayden Clark for Parks and Rec.
I'm going to have public comment. Let's let this go through here. All right, so I'm going to second your motion, and now I'm going to ask for public comment, and then we'll come back to the council for the vote.
I share, I share Lisa's concern. I think the proper position for a city employee would be to the liaison or with the other term you had on something that they work in the city, and that's where I think they should attend, because they have the expertise or supposed to have the expertise to answer questions. That totally makes sense to me. I did wish to hear off of what Adeline said regarding participation. In other words, if, if one of you were to make a comment in favor of something that was going to come before you, just use the Danville project, that would show that you had a predisposition when it came to public hearing, and you would have to disqualify yourself from participating in the process and refute yourself from voting, because that's part of the process, you're not, you're not allowed to voice an opinion. And I think Adeline doesn't understand exactly how, even just being there. I recommend that we, I really recommend that you folks consider not attending, as Adeline says, now that we're hopefully going to record everything, feel free to watch meetings, you know, then you don't have to be there, and it's a little difficult to get the full tenor of what's going on in the room. It is allowed, but you're not allowed to participate should anything have a chance of coming before you for another decision. And that's something that I've seen happen, it's involved in quite a few things. Maybe an unspoken policy regarding that going. But if you do, if you do go there and observe, which I believe is legal to do, strictly observe, stay out of the process, don't speak, don't shake your head yes or no if you're participating in the process, and just strictly observe. But that's just, I think that I'm going to reinforce what Adeline said regarding that. And I think maybe you should come up with a policy, procedure and protocol, so there's no misunderstanding of what is proper participation or not participation in the particular committee thing. My apologies.
Thank you. Julie, is that Julie's hand up, or is it still up on the last?
Yes, Adeline, and thank you for giving my comment, I'll be brief. I would like to just see that our applicants can kind of follow the procedure on the application, and what do you think the applicants need as best as they can, you know, especially when they already got a lot of prior knowledge and you're going to be applying to this position. You know, it's hard to read when people handwrite stuff in and when they're uploaded. My next thing is kind of back to, like, Adeline, you mentioned, you know, you feel like it's a conflict of interest to be there, we always be present and, and not necessarily be persuasive. So I think that's always a great thing, like you said, you go to the HCOG meetings, and then the recordings is really good too for staff and other commissions and councils, right? Like that call later. I really appreciate that I can watch the HCOG meetings as well, if you attend, because I get a lot of stuff from that that sometimes don't go back very far, it's really extensive. So I think it's important that all our city and staff, truly, council, really promote our commissioners to take advantage of that being in a mass email that, even using Justin's great volunteer time right now, to just make sure that they thought this, that they, there were mission meetings and that they can view them. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment, Lisa?
Just quickly, when I looked at the agenda for today and I saw, this has to do with the applications, and I looked and I saw that someone was a member, employee of the City of Blue Lake, I was surprised. So I want to speak to what has been brought up, that I think that these commissions should be members of the community, they're volunteer, very much appreciated. I think having them be a liaison or whatever the word was, is appropriate for their expertise. But to be a member of the commissions, I think is a conflict of interest as a city employee, a paid employee. And I think it's, again, having them should be as liaison when a topic comes up that's associated with their expertise, is totally within the bounds of that. But I think otherwise, I think it should be a public commission, not something that someone who's a city employee. Because I was surprised to see that, quite frankly. So I hope y'all can reconsider.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, Becky?
Yeah, mine too, of course, I prefer not to see Chair's on there because being a city employee, and in the commission, I do still, I feel that it would cause a conflict, I just, and I just, also her application. I agree with Julie, what she said, she could have at least typed out stuff on a separate sheet of paper instead of writing it in, it was very hard to read, there was very limited stuff to even say about what her experience was.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, back to council, if there are no further. All right, back to council. If there are no further questions or comments, we'll take it to a vote. All of them in favor of?
So, well, you're, you're combining both commissions and I'm, I would vote differently.
Oh, well, your, your motion.
Can we break that into two different?
Okay, so the motion was for all three, so you'd like to break it out? All right, so you would have to, yeah. A list that's going on.
I would move, I would like to move that we, is it?
Yeah.
James Brown to the Parks and Rec Commission and Jayden Clark to the Parks and Rec Commission.
And I would second that motion.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes. Okay, so now we need a motion for Charis.
So I am going to retract it at this point because until it's further investigated, I'm going to stay where she is. She's an advisor already. If that's okay?
There's no motion, there's no motion.
Okay.
No action on that. All right. Let's move on to our city engineering and planning services contract. The city has gone out to bid, they received two proposals. And SHN has provided planning and engineering services to the City of Blue Lake for a number of years and staff recommends that we go with SHN. That is an abbreviation of what we have here, but based on the timing, I'm not going to read everything else. Any discussion about this?
What's that? Selvage Heber and Nelson?
What?
That's what SHN is.
Oh, oh, it stands for, I know, I want to ask that too because I thought it was going to be something geological and it's people's names.
Who founded it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any comment on this from public?
I take, I take hours and hours to research all these topics. That's what I do, so appreciate you allowing me time. I did, I always question process on these kind of appointments. The process, how, how, how come we only got one response to this? And it is standard policy normally, we had two, but this is, they're, they're bound together or not really. We actually only had one. One's only for a portion of that and that person's recommended to be moved forward in a, as I recall. But, but anyway, the process on this to solicit these things to qualify is going up to, what extent do we go? Do we, do we advertise this in a paper of general circulation? That's normally how things are done for this. City of Arcade are frequently, gets a hold of, there's groups that advertise for different things like this and advertise with that. Otherwise, unless we're doing that or reaching out to other people who are qualified to do this, nobody's aware unless they come down and see it posted on our website and they don't have time to look at all of our things. Or come and see, post it in your three places. But I always, I always ask, to what detail have we gone to put out RFP or RFQs, any of those things out there? And I think comparative to circulate that and maybe even how staff get a hold of people who specialize in this, get a hold of who does Trinidad's and all these things in the process. And so we're not dealing with the building inspector this time, this is the SHN, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's just my question, what kind of process has been done as far as trying to get a competitive bid? A lot of times, the person continues to go, which is great, they have institutional, they can do it cheaper, have no problem with that. But the other thing is after time, some people gets into the position and if you don't actually put them to the fire, you end up paying possibly a little bit of a premium price. We don't have that much money and there's only so much honey, honey pot at Virginia Valley to save. But I was, I think, I think as far as making sure that the process has enabled us to get the best bid we can for the service.
Thank you. Any further comment? Back to council for possible action.
I am curious too about that. Mandy, can you tell us how?
Yeah, so the city robustly advertised the RFQ. We sent it to every single engineering and planning firm in Humboldt and Donar County specifically to solicit their interest. We also advertised it in multiple locations and in the newspaper. And we, we absolutely did our due diligence to solicit interest.
And then the only one that, the only one that, why?
No, there were two.
Oh, excuse me.
I didn't read the whole staff report. Had I read it, it would have said that we had two proposals for service. One proposal is an all-inclusive, okay, and.
Who was these limited?
The Almsberg and Preston.
Who?
Almsberg and Preston.
Where are they located?
It's not unheard of or out of the norm for, to not receive bids on this type of request.
I would, oh, so we're just directing or we're not reading?
I need some direction to move forward to negotiate the contract.
What was that?
I'm asking them for authorization to negotiate the contract with SHN as the responsive bidder.
So Almsberg, yeah.
Yes, no, what I'm asking for is to negotiate a contract with SHN to provide planning and engineering services for the city with Almsberg being, accepting their proposal to negotiate in the future if we need any type of conflict services or if there's specific areas of expertise that they can provide that SHN does not, which is also very common to do.
So you're taking, you're taking SHN over Almsberg and Almsberg's next place?
Yes, yes, because SHN is an all-inclusive service provider that will be the city's engineer and planner and surveyor of record.
And Almsberg can?
Almsberg did not apply for the full proposal, only a specific portion of it, which is totally fine. This happens regularly.
So this needs to be in the form of a motion?
Um, you could.
Or a direction?
If you give me a direction. I just want, I wanted to bring it to council. I have authority to already do this under my purview of city manager, but I like to bring these back because I think it's a big process and it's an important one. And it's these SHN acts in a very technical and important role for the city. So I need to bring these back to the council for review and direction.
Well, I think we should go for it.
Yeah.
I think so. Could you give us a quick idea of what types of things Almsberg might, might be doing for us? That, where their, that's their part that's really?
I don't know that they would be doing anything for us. It's only in the event that we needed one of their services that they could provide that we weren't going to go out to bid for. We could use them because this meets the requirements of a competent and comprehensive proposal process.
Okay.
All right, so we're directing you to negotiate a contract for services with SHN counseling engineer. And that moves us on to item eight, which is City of Blue Lake Building Official Contract. The City of Blue Lake has solicited proposals for building official services. Received one proposal for services. The applicant, Daniel Dimick, is a professional contractor with experience in the construction fields. Building official works one day per week for the city. Funding for the position comes from the general fund and supported by permit fees. So our recommended action is to direct the city manager to negotiate an employment agreement with Daniel Dimick for building official services. And these are hard to find, aren't they, right now? And this is a fairly young fellow, I think, isn't he?
I have high hopes that he'll stay for a while.
I know. I'm hoping he'll stay in Humboldt County because we need services like this. I know this is hard to find. We've always gotten older, sometimes ready to retire or retire people for this job.
I worked at college with Dan many, many years ago. I think he's a good guy. Yeah, he's Dan.
Okay. So are we then directing the city manager? I suppose we should ask for public input, public input?
So I was very pleased with his resume. If he were here tonight, and it's always nice to do, to say it looked like a very promising thing. I was going to ask, let's see, he worked for Cosby, he worked for another larger company, Kramer, and those are very reputable firms. And I was going to ask him, well, how, did you work for Fertaro or did you work for a couple of other guys I know? But very pleased, if you can get a person of this quality, I look forward to, you know, this is what I do. I work with the building inspector and he does have the qualifications that I'd like to see. The biggest thing he has is he has hands on, where he's actually been in construction. We end up with some building inspectors and they don't have a clue what actually happens in the real world. And this, this person usually is way better to have someone who can work with us and we talk the same language and understand. Hey, maybe, maybe you can't come and inspect on Wednesday, we can't, I need an inspector on Monday. They'll say, take some pictures of your concrete before you pour and a couple of pictures as you're going. That kind of attitude really is greatly appreciated amongst those of us who are in the construction trade. So I highly recommend giving him a try.
Any other public comments? Back to council for direction?
I'd direct staff, I would read to the staff.
I would.
So, okay.
So you're directed to negotiate an employment agreement with Daniel Dimick for building official services. And we're moving on to item nine, resolution number 1217, the Clean California Grant Authorization. City staff is requesting authorization through this resolution to apply for funding through the Clean California Local Grant Program. I've been hearing a lot about this from HCOG too, so this is good to see. I'm very glad that this has come here. They fund projects that enhance or create recreation spaces with an emphasis on projects that tradition, transition, underutilized and/or impacted sites. The Blue Lake Bike Park meets the threshold requirements of the funding source and the city qualifies under the disadvantaged communities profile. Any questions or comments from council?
Right now, I'm thinking about $750,000 is what I'm looking at the budget for.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from staff? Open to the public for comment.
No comment.
Back to council for possible resolution pass.
Do we motion to authorize it?
I motion, no, you need to pass resolution number 27, 1217. All right, is that your motion?
Yes. Oh, so we do. Okay, I motion that we pass.
I second.
Authorized resolution number 1217.
Pass it.
Pass it. And I second that.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion from council? All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes.
So the only issue with this is because Mayor Protonal is not here. Councilmember McKay, would you be okay with a testing to the vote? Because it authorizes me to submit and so it looks awkward for me to also be attesting to the resolution.
Yes, I can attest to the vote.
So she would be under Mayor Protam, it would be her instead of Ann Protonal?
Yeah, it would just be council member.
I think she could still sign it, but, okay.
Yeah, she wasn't necessarily here to attest to the actual vote.
I see.
So.
Okay, it's gnarly. Item 10 is resolution number 1218. And this is the amended and restated joint powers agreement of Fire Risk Management Services, formerly FDAC Employee Benefits Authority. The City of Blue Lake is a member of the Fire District Association of California Employee Benefits Association. There is acquaintance is the city employee health benefit provider. This consolidates with fire agency self-insurance system in July and will form Fire Risk Management Services. As a member of agency, the city is required to execute the amended and restated joint powers agreement in order to maintain our membership. So it sounds like there's just been some changes in there.
Margaret?
Some organizations, okay. All right. Any questions or comments from staff, from council? Any comments from the public?
I just, I have a question. It's a, it's a protocol question. And I notice about a third of the things the county do take a four-fifth vote. And so they have to pull them off consent if they don't have a, is there anything in this thing that follows the same guidelines the county has, has as far as requiring a four-fifth vote? Maybe that's something you've never heard of, but very common in the supervisor's chambers and I've seen it in other municipalities. That's just a question. I want to make sure we're crossing our t's and dotting our i's if a four-fifth vote is required on certain topics.
I don't know. I've always had, a quorum is three and as long as there's three of us here, we can continue the city business. That's what I've always followed with other, with other boards too, as long as we have a quorum, whatever that quorum threshold is. So. Back to council for possible motion and second?
Motion that we pass resolution number 1218.
Motion. Motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Stefani to authorize resolution number 1218. Any further discussion? All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes. Item 11, resolution number 12, I'm sorry, resolution number 1219, State of California Recreation Grant Authorization Action. The State of California's Department of Parks and Rec has issued a notice of funding availability for the development of recreation trails and features.
This is, there's the title.
What's it? In the resolution?
The recommended action. That's okay, excuse me. I digress. I was confused, but it's a mistake. Yeah.
But it's important if there is one on the resolution, that's not, there's more of an issue.
Okay, nope, we're good.
Okay. So staff anticipate submitting an application to support the development of Blue Lake Bike Park, including funding to support trail connectivity and amenity improvements. And we're looking for somebody here.
So this is kind of us running a parallel path. There's two applications out right now that Bike Park could fall under and we don't want to lose an opportunity. So our goal has always been to write for as much funding as possible. Sometimes we will submit for different funding sources for the same project, hoping that one will get funded. And that's just kind of how this project is playing out. We don't have another project that would fit this parameter. So we're going to try and get an application into vote, hoping that one of them will provide funding. Ask for the most, vote for the best. Then we would ask for a modification or amendment, maybe to do an improved project or an expanded project.
Any further questions or comments from council? Open to public. Back to council for possible motion and second? Oh. Thank you. Julie?
Yes, thank you very much for noting my answer. I'm just going to chime in a little bit. If this grant, and I agree with Mandy, you've always got to write it for a lot more than you're expecting to receive. A lot of times they're going to down that on you. So that's our high. If this allocation is going for like trails and recreation, I'd really like to see some putback if there's a little bit left over back to the private property owners, like at the bridge there that are having to do, you know, obviously they can't maintain all the access that's overwhelming them. You know, having some portable toilets there, B&amp;Bs right there, it's really accessible for them to be servicing them. Otherwise, you know, those people are doing on private property in the bushes, that's our verbal way, okay? So, you know, if you're going to be inviting people out and we have some funds, let's during select time of seasonally, maybe have some resources out there that can kind of, you know, if you're going to monopolize on somebody's private property access to the river, which is right away through the high watermark, at least maybe put some of that money back to making that. And I've heard of the commentary of other trail walkers to just have a little bit of restroom access. And we have B&amp;B, they're right there, can't really, can't really walk out of that one, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other public comments? Back to council for possible, uh, motion and second?
I move to pass resolution number 1219.
Second? Question made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Stefani to pass resolution number 28, 2019. I see where the title is. Okay. 19. Any further discussion? All of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. We are now on our consent agenda and I sent in my little correction on page two that I picked up on. We have Lisa Hooven and Lisa Hoover, so you're supporting Lisa Hoover's request. And if you have any other items? Page two under Aaron McCleod. All right. All right. Um, so do we want to pass the consent agenda together? Or did anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I don't need to pull anything.
All right. We need.
Motion to pass the consent agenda.
Uh, I motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay. So here's a, be a second.
Sorry.
Yeah. All right. Uh, motion made by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Elise Stefani.
Talk fast.
To pass the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Moving on. To our reports of council and staff. City manager report, very thorough. If you had a chance to look at it, I'm sure you all did. I was especially excited about the upgrade to the treatment plant, including the installation of a new grinder. And the gas line replacement that looks like Mercer Frasier is going to complete the paving and restoration work. It will start the last week of May. That's kind of exciting. And then we were approved for the funding by the CTC for our truck route study and design. Those are just highlights that I have from the manager's report that I thought were notable.
Where'd you get the information on the last part of May? And, uh, was that given to you by PG&E?
Yes, this is in our, we get a city manager's report. And that was under the, um, gas line project. Based on good weather, which I think we're having. It said, "Gas line replacement project. PG&E has completed the gas line replacement project. A contract has been awarded to Mercer Frasier to complete the paving and restoration work. Paving will start the last week of May, depending upon whether it's scheduled. The city has requested that the parade route, oh, thank you for that, be the first area paved to ensure that it's ready for Annie and Mary Day, which is July ninth." Any further discussion? Public?
What kind of outreach has been done to the public to let them know when certain streets will be closed and things? That's always appreciated by us. And I'm really, and what's this?
Goes on a weekly or day-to-day basis from the company, Frasier.
So anyway, what, this is the first I've heard about it. Just even a general thing that's gonna be happening. You know, it would be nice to have a little bit. And then the other question I have is, 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 what is the scope of the paving? Are they totally paving all the areas that have the bump? Are they just jackharing back at the patches and trying to repaint?
Other than, um, Blue Lake Boulevard.
Thank you.
Well, Blue Lake Boulevard is not in, is county. So it's city streets and it's supposed to mitigate whatever happened when they dug everything up. Supposed to smooth everything out. So it won't be new paving, but it'll be improved, from what I understand. They were supposed to do it themselves and then they decided they couldn't, so they contracted out with someone. Yeah, right. Okay, um. Reports of staff. I'll start with Elise. Did you attend any meetings that you can remember? After a three hour and a half meeting of this?
I attended an RCEA meeting in, um, in April. And RCEA celebrated their 20 year anniversary. They had a party and reception on May, on April 28th at, um, the taproom. So it was a nice, it was a nice celebration. It was nice. It was in Blue Lake. Also, at our last, uh, meeting, we, um, accepted the Blue Lake Rancheria as a joint powers member entity. And they have gone through the process now of taking that to their, um, to their tribal council. And, um, okay, after tomorrow will be our next study. And Jason Remus is going to be the representative from Rancheria on, um, on our, our board. So, um, they will be the second tribe to become a joint, uh, to become a member entity of RCEA. So that's kind of exciting news. And as you probably know, or maybe you don't know, um, the Blue Lake Rancheria has done a great deal of energy work, solar energy and battery storage. And, um, have really paved, um, paved some, you know, um, some brand new trails, um, in terms of energy. I actually visited the Rancheria yesterday and got a tour of all of their facilities. And I had a nice meeting with, uh, Jason Remus, the general manager. So I am hopeful that at some future point, the city can, um, make some partners with our neighbors Rancheria. And, um, and where we can, uh, we can all benefit from that association. So energy is a, is, is a really great, uh, you know, this innovative energy process is really a great place to get that started. So hopefully, we might be able to, uh, to work with them in the future.
The other meeting?
The other meeting I was supposed to, I went, we wrote to as kids. That was, uh, Parks and Mexicanish.
I attended Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting, um, last Thursday, May 18th. And, um, June 15th, Thursday at 1:00 PM, the Indianola. A groundbreaking will be occurring at the Old Fashioned Carey. And I R S P that I would be there. Uh, we have a dump day in Blue Lake, July 16th, Sunday. We saw a very lovely video, a very sad video for 20 minutes called Humboldt is Home. It was about homeless folks. It was, um, it was very well done. And, um, we heard a, um, we heard about offshore community benefits from Catrina Escarta. And, um, we authorized a letter of support for the wind, offshore wind, uh, project. And so I have a packet of that. I think that's interesting. Looking at more. This is, The Grange is getting a grant for, I went to The Grange meeting as you did too, and they're getting a grant for a new heater. Really exciting. They're looking at possibilities there. I went to a Humboldt Police Management Authority meeting and we officially hired, um, Eric Keller Heckman to serve as executive director, which is good. He was the interim. He's, um, doing a very good job. And we also approved our budget at that time. And they have a $14 million budget. Hard to believe for, um, Humboldt County. Um, and then the last meeting I went, I know, I go to.
We have reams, reams of meetings.
Uh, okay. And the only other meeting that I wanted to report on. Oh, is that the museum is going to be opening on June, Saturday, June 10th, from one to four. That is our new reopening date.
All right. I did the Blue Lake Economic Development. Um, Sunday markets are in place for August and September. And Humboldt Bay will be minimally involved. It's going to be more about Blue Lake. Um, the roller rink is busy and successful, coming up with great ideas. Are they going to do the idea for the moon festival? Yeah. Yes. If you want to dress up, what is the date?
Uh, June 2nd and 3rd.
June 2nd and 3rd. There's a moon festival here where there's, uh, Star Wars celebration.
Oh, right.
All, in this county and Delmore. And, uh, so if you want to go skating and dress up in Star Wars outfits and everything, it's gonna be fun. Volunteers are needed for the Bill Nessler Car Show and, uh, which is, uh, 7th, uh, July 8th and 9th, excuse me. And then the leisure sports is, is an idea that's going to happen this year where, um, different leisure sports will be down around different places like bocce and lawn darts. I don't know exactly what all of them, do you remember all? I didn't write down all the different types. So there's cornhole, I think, in some places and horseshoes. Horseshoes, yes. So more leisure type sports on July 22nd and 23rd. So there are volunteers, uh, that they would like, uh, for those dates. Um, I went to the League of Cities meeting in Fort Bragg.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, had an exceptional, um, presentation about the Great Redwood Trail, which we are at the absolute end of right here. It's a, uh, it's a 316 mile long trail from San Francisco to Blue Lake. And the economic impacts of this, when it is completed, are going to be amazing. There will be people riding in here from far away. They're hoping it's going to be like, you know, the other long trails where people trek across, you know, it's big. It's really big and they're working really hard on it. So, um, that was amazing. And then they also had a presentation of, uh, something they have in place there, which is called CREW, which is a care response unit. Um, where they have, in the, seated in the police department, they have social workers, who help with, uh, mostly homeless issues. Uh, you know, people who are having meltdowns and stuff like that, so that the police department doesn't go in and, and spend their time doing that. They can go catch the drunk driver because one on one goes right through, or one, highway one goes right through Fort Bragg. So they're more busy dealing with crime. And then these social people are asked to help, you know, de-escalate and do other things and get services. And it's working really well. They've been doing it for months. They're doing it in Arcata too, with the ambassador program that's going on there, where they have a series of people going out to talk to people and de-escalate, get to know them and help them with services and, you know, and kind of get down at the level instead of, you know, guns and, you know. Yeah, yes, not committed. So that is going really well. Arts and Heritage, uh, we're helping with ideas for, uh, the paint colors and where to place murals and sculptures. And the idea of Spring Up, which is to beautify the downtown area. And then the Moon Fest, um, is part of that as well, which is again on the, uh, June 2nd and 3rd. So, um, yeah.
Thank you. All right. That's our manager report and staff reports.
And then you said something about a dump day. Is that a Greenway's day or is that a dump day?
It's a dump day. It's not Greenway's. We have a Greenway's day.
Okay.
This was a, this was a dump day. Have you heard about that on July 16th?
I did that last year. You're like, dump day. I've heard of it before. Wasn't it a little while, like in Corbell or something?
But I know. Waste Authority or something. Well, you would think it was the Waste Authority, but it's under Clean California. Julia Peterson, Caltrans District One, Clean California Program Coordinator, will provide a presentation regarding the Clean California Grant Opportunity. And Ju, Julia, and she said there is going to be a dump day in Blue Lake on July 16th, Sunday. And that was the first I had heard of.
Yeah.
They had a last year dump at Corbell.
What, Corbell?
Well, that's where it's been in the past.
Okay. Well, maybe she just said Blue Lake and she thought she, Corbell.
Was that the one that was held in the city? Cause there was multiple bins put around the city wing here as well.
That would be different. That would be nice.
Yeah, the one at Corbell.
You don't know. Probably not in the city.
They had dumpster after dumpster after dumpster after dumpster.
If they do receive funding, they'll prob, Julia will probably get ahold of us and let us know. We'll start advertising.
Okay, yeah, because it, there'll be time, there'll be time before our next meeting to advertise it more if it's a go. Yeah, I know.
Maybe they'll, will they take their cars?
That's a whole issue of licensing. Okay. Uh, we are on future agenda items. I have zooming and planning commission meetings. Are we going to have a report from our, um, accounting?
Yes.
Accountants?
So we do need to look at a, um, two meetings in June or a special meeting in June or if you feel like we can make it through your budget with one meeting and pass it.
So you're thinking of maybe the second Tuesday, like the 13th of June?
Yeah, we normally do like a special session just for the budget. And then we need to have our budget passed by June 30th.
30th, yeah.
So we'll set up as another meeting. Uh, one of our regular councils, special extra.
Well, we are gonna, we're looking at that.
Well, I'd like to.
Look at your calendars.
I'd like to push it so it gives us more time because we've got a lot. There's a lot of work still being done. There's a lot of stuff with the planning commission that I have to work on.
So we have Tuesday, the 6th, Tuesday, the 13th, Tuesday, the 20th. And then our meeting is the 27th.
20th and the 20th, yeah.
So you want the 20th as a special budget meeting and then our regular meeting will be on the 27th?
Yeah.
How does the 20th look for everyone?
Works for me.
Okay. 6:30, budget meeting.
And it will be specific to the budget unless we have some type of emergency item that needs to be drawn up with.
Very good.
Regarding your budget, is it possible that we don't, we get the budget, not just the Friday before the meeting you have, but at least a few more days because it's a very, for you to go through and for us to understand also. It's just very difficult to, to, you know, understand your budget. Maybe we can get some feedback from staff, which you probably will need prior to the meeting also. Just as a suggestion.
So who, who will attend that meeting? Will the accountant be there?
Your accountant will be there.
We can try.
Thank you.
I don't expect the impossible. I've never had that expectation. Thank you.
All right. Any other future agenda items? You all know the Wednesday before the meeting protocol. Thank you for considering.
Something will come up.
Yes.
The brain death thing is.
I usually call them.
I moved to adjourn. Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.